Livestock, Rural Development and Credit to Review the State of the Livestock Industry will come to order. I'd like to thank the ranking member of the Livestock Subcommittee, Mr. Costa, for working with me to put together this hearing to examine the state of the livestock sector. Now that the Farm Bill is behind us, it's an important and worthwhile task to take inventory of the many and varied challenges currently faced by the livestock community. This will provide a framework for assessing priorities going forward. For this purpose, we have an excellent set of witnesses, from the esteemed Chief Economist of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, serving as our first panel, to an array of experts representing the elements of animal agriculture, testifying on our second panel. A hearing with as broad a topic as this one means there will be a considerable amount of ground to cover. I'm looking forward to our witnesses' testimony and their responses to the questions from members of the Subcommittee on Topics Both Old and New. While I anticipate we'll hear about ongoing issues such as the GIPS rule and the mandatory country-of-origin labeling, I'm also expecting to learn more about emerging concerns such as PED and the administration's development of new dietary guidelines. As we begin, I want to take a moment to echo the prepared remarks of Chairman Lucas at the beginning of our recent full committee hearing where we hosted the Secretary of Agriculture. He said, "The Farm Bill was quite an achievement. It contains a good deal of fine public policy that will be welcomed by our constituents." But there were disappointments as well in terms of delivering much-needed regulatory relief to the agriculture community. The ranking member and I both remain especially concerned with the ongoing burdens associated with the mandatory country-of- origin labeling law. This ill-conceived law has created economic disruption on the livestock industry and set the stage for potential $2 billion in trade retaliation as a result of a WTO dispute with two of our most important trading partners, Canada and Mexico. I expect we'll be hearing from a number of our witnesses about this topic today and in the near future, especially as the case in the U.S. Court of Appeals proceeds next month and when the WTO compliance panel issues its ruling as early as the following month. Again, I want to thank the ranking member, Costa, for his assistance in putting this hearing together today, and we welcome our witnesses, and I would like to recognize Mr. Costa for his opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for holding this timely hearing. Our Subcommittee obviously has an important responsibility as it relates to providing oversight for livestock, rural development, and credit for agriculture throughout the country. Obviously, the issues facing America's livestock industry, the feedstock that provides the cleanest, safest food anywhere in the world for America's consumers is a critical element of Americans' agricultural productivity. We're here to address a number of those issues facing the livestock industry. America's ranchers, meat processors, are facing challenges with their ability to continue to provide this incredible product that they produce. A particular concern, of course, is loosening, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, the burdens and regulatory policies and proposals, which are, notwithstanding well-intended, a hindrance to America's ranchers and processors to comply with. In California, many of you know, we have one of the most aggravated drought conditions that our state has faced, and our processors and our producers are staggering under these impacts of this drought. And while there always have been and will be a number of competing demands to our state's water system, clearly, like in the course of the subject we're going to be hearing this morning, regulatory actions have been taken that make a bad situation worse, in my opinion. During the 2009 drought, we had 30% to 40% unemployment in many of the areas that I represent in the San Joaquin Valley. But our businesses that help support our agriculture economy were devastated then and they're being impacted today. However, this drought's not just about California's economy and the families that work in the fields, it's about a crisis that will touch every Californian and it will touch the American consumer at their dinner table because of increased costs to the consumer. We can't change the weather, of course, and I wish we could take some of this rain here today and move it to California, but we can change course and make a more friendly regulatory environment. As you noted, there are a number of areas that I'd like to touch upon beyond MCOOL and beyond GIPS. Our RFS standards, I think, have increased the cost of feedstock in every area. It has had an impact, notwithstanding good intentions for renewable fuel standards. It's increased the cost of feed, not only to beef industry, to the poultry industry, and to the pork industry. And while ethanol is not the only factor in increasing feedstock costs, it should be noted, before the RFS standards or the renewable fuel standards were implemented, 12.5% of the corn in America was used to produce ethanol. Today, over 40% of the corn produced in America is used to produce ethanol. I've got to believe, in my opinion, that this is price-distorting as it relates to the impacts and the cost of that. The Grain and Inspection Packard and Stockard Administration, otherwise known as GIPS, that's a mouthful, is an issue that you and I share a lot in common. We've been fighting the proposed GIPS rule since it was originally in the 2008 Farm Bill, and I find it frankly very frustrating that, notwithstanding Congress's will, we continue to have the agency attempting to make rulemaking that clearly the Congress has indicated a different opinion on. Congressman Conway and I and others have been working on this, as you have, Mr. Chairman Crawford. The rulemaking process resulted in proposals that would have fundamentally and negatively changed the way livestock and poultry is marketed in this country by taking away a very valuable tool, and that is value-market adding. When we talk about value-added, it's what producers in America do to make products more productive, products more easily to prepare for the family dinner table. Its value-added makes them more nutritious, and to take away from that ability to provide value-added, I think is inappropriate. Congressman Conway and I have offered amendments that mirror the language of action taken by Congress in appropriations bill, and it was signed by the President, I will indicate four times. So this GIPS-fixed language was intended to put this issue to rest and allow the livestock and poultry industry to market their animals however they want, when they want to, and where they want to, without GIPS dictating the transactions. We need to ensure that the livestock, poultry producers can take advantage of value-added marketing opportunities in order to satisfy customers and remain profitable. Finally, the cool mandatory government-run country-of- origin labeling has failed, period, in my opinion. Consumers are not factored into their meat purchasing decisions, and producers are not getting any return for the premium as a result of it. What we are seeing is increased cost to ranchers and processors in order to comply with these regulations, and it is impacting the industry. This program has added nothing, in my view, but costs to the industry. And to be totally honest, we don't know what the actual costs of the industry are because a formal economic impact study has never been done. Furthermore, and this is where I am very concerned, because I spend a great deal of my time focusing on increasing trade opportunities between the United States and Asia, the United States and Europe, and this is threatening our trade relationship between two of our biggest markets in North America, and that is Canada and Mexico. Currently, our exports of beef, pork, and chicken are immensely huge to those two markets. I think many of us assume that the World Trade Organization will rule against the United States and will face harsh retaliation efforts. No one wants to see retaliation efforts taken by Canada or Mexico. We have the data, the studies, and the WTO experience to show that it's time that we fix MCOOL, this mandatory labeling. This hearing could not come at a better opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to show how we can fix the devastating impacts that mandatory labeling will impact the markets and our businesses to ranchers and processors throughout the country. We want to see this problem solved, and we need to work together to make that happen. I've drafted legislation that I will be introducing, would be interested in having all the members of the Subcommittee as co-sponsors of the bill. And again, in closing, I want to thank you for the countless efforts that you are making, the stories that our livestock industry, our poultry producers, and dairymen across the nation and in California are dealing with to struggle to make a profit at the bottom line. Again, this hearing could not have taken place at a better time, and I look forward to hearing the witnesses' testimony, and I yield back the balance of my time.
I thank the ranking member and echo his sentiments, and I just want to say the Chair will request that other members submit their opening statements for the records of the witnesses may begin their testimony to ensure that there's ample time for questions without objection, so ordered. Right now, I'd like to introduce our first panel. We are honored to have Dr. Joseph Glover, Chief Economist of the United States Department of Agriculture here in Washington, D.C., join us today. With that, Dr. Glover, you're recognized. Begin when you're ready.
Chairman Crawford, ranking member Costa, and members of the Subcommittee, thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the state of the livestock and poultry sectors. While the state of the broad U.S. agricultural economy has been strong these past several years, the livestock sector has not shared in the boom experienced by many crop producers. On April 15th of this, on April 15th, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics reported that the Consumer Price Index for beef and veal prices in March was 7.4% higher than year ago levels. The CPI for pork was also up 5.3% above year ago levels, while chicken prices were up almost 4%. While hog and cattle prices have been at or near record levels so far in 2014, these prices reflect tight supply due in part to tight margins the last several years, but also due to drought in the Southern Plains in California and the outbreak of PED among swine herds, which will continue to influence the ability of producers to benefit from and respond to these higher prices. Record prices for grains and oilseeds have kept feed costs high and operating margins tight for most animal producers for much of the past five years. Tight margins, in turn, have constrained expansion, which has led to record-high prices for cattle and hogs and near-record prices for broilers. With falling grain and oilseed prices, falling record global crops of grain and oilseeds, the livestock sector would normally be posed to take advantage of strong livestock prices in moderating feed costs in 2014. However, the ability of the beef and pork sectors to expand production will be limited by non-feed cost factors. We expect that red meat production will remain constrained in the near term and is forecasted in 2014 to be the lowest since 2010 and 1.8% below the 2008 record level. Prospects for the beef sector in the near term are limited by the decline in the cattle inventory, the biological lags inherent in the production system, and persistent dryness in the Southern Plains now in its fourth consecutive year of drought. Likewise, in the hog sector, positive producer returns and lower feed costs have set the stage for strong expansion. However, the spread of porcine epidemic diarrhea virus, PED, through the U.S. herd is expected to sharply limit the supply of hogs compared to earlier expectations. In comparison to the beef and pork sectors, the poultry industry is able to respond more quickly to market signals. Broiler production is forecast to be at record levels in 2014, up 1.8% over the previous record set last year. Egg production will likely see record levels as well in 2014. In my written testimony, I discussed general trends in the livestock and poultry sector before turning to a more extensive review of the current situation outlook for red meat, poultry, and egg sectors, including recent movements in retail prices. But in the time left this morning, let me address one of the lesser contentious issues of the 2014 Farm Bill, the livestock disaster provisions. On April 14th, USDA publishes final rule implementing the supplemental disaster programs from the new Farm Bill. On April 15th, the Department began to sign up producers for those four permanent disaster programs, three of which cover livestock losses. Since that date, over 13,000 producers have already visited FSA offices and started application for disaster programs. Over $8.5 million in payments have already been approved, with about $4.5 million in payments already being transferred to producers' banks. The programs are ultimately expected to provide more than $2 billion in payments to producers for eligible losses that have occurred since the expiration of the livestock disaster assistance programs in 2011 for years 2012 and 2013, and will continue to provide support to livestock producers in times of disaster over the life of this Farm Bill. In conclusion, following years of high feed costs and tight margins, the outlook for -- livestock and poultry appears to be improving, but significant challenges in the beef and pork sector remain. Record-high output prices and reduced prices for grain and oilseeds are tempered by lingering drought and the spread of PED. Production of red meat and turkey production is forecast lower for 2014. Although broiler production is forecast to increase, the gain will be insufficient to offset the decline in other meats. Livestock and poultry prices will be higher in 2014, reflecting tight overall meat supplies and improving demand. Eventually, production of red meat, poultry, and eggs is expected to increase when producers are able to take advantage of more favorable margins to expand herds and flocks. And increased production will then moderate retail prices for red meats and poultry and eggs. How soon steer and hog prices respond will depend on whether we see improvement in pasture and forage conditions in the Southern Plains and the West, and the extent to which PED can be controlled through biosecurity practices. Despite global production records for most grains and oilseeds in 2013, global grain and oilseed stocks remain tight going into the 2014-15 crop year. As such, feed costs and livestock margins will remain vulnerable to potential supply shocks throughout the year. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my statement. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Glaber. We'll go ahead and begin our first round of questions. The Chair would like to remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who are present at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of their arrival. Appreciate members' understanding and cooperation. Thanks again, Dr. Glaber. Let me ask you this. I'll start with the subject that ranking members spent a lot of time on. It's in the 2014 Farm Bill includes Section 12104, requiring USDA to conduct an economic analysis of the May 2013 country-of-origins labeling rule with respect to its impact on consumers, producers, and packers in the United States. This analysis is not due for a couple of months, but I was wondering if you could offer some insights, comments regarding your progress and preliminary findings.
Well, thanks very much. We are, you're right, we certainly were aware of the language. We began looking at preparing some of the materials and getting together some of the literature on this. There's actually a fairly extensive literature on what the impacts of mandatory country-of-origins labeling has on potential markets. Unfortunately, few of them are directed specifically at the rule, and I think that's the challenge for us, is to kind of look at both the 2009 and 2013 rule. But we've been looking at the economic literature. We've been also looking at the comments filed for both rules, just to see how proponents and others are bringing other information to the table. It's clear that mandatory country-of-origins labeling imposes costs on the industry. I think there's no question about that. Even the analyses that accompanied the rulemaking, both in 2009 and 2013, talked about that. It's also clear that the mandatory COOL has adversely affected trade in live animals. If you look at Canadian slaughter cattle, it's down about 25% from 2008. Canada feeder cattle are down about 44%. Canada feeder pig imports are down about 41%, and slaughter hogs are down almost 2/3. Now, not all that's due to COOL. Canada's, their hog and cattle industries have been under the same pressures ours have been in terms of high feed costs and things. But the issue, I think, that we'll be trying to sort through here is what are the impacts of this, how these costs are impacting things. And we want to do a good job, and we want to do an objective job on it, and so we'll be spending some time on that over the next few months.
Okay. If the WTO case goes against the United States this summer, many observers say that we're potentially looking at $2 billion in retaliatory tariffs, a large portion of which is aimed at our agriculture community. In your view, is this additional economic burden on our farmers and ranchers worth the value of MCOOL?
Well, I'm not going to comment on the case just because of the fact that it's in the WTO, and I don't want to prejudice anything there. The timeline, as I understand it, is we'll likely get a preliminary report in June and then an official report published later in the summer. At that point, there could be a potential appeal by either parties. And then after that, there'd be an arbitration panel that would decide on the damages. If awarded damages, Canada and Mexico would have the right to impose duties on U.S. products. I think it was mentioned, I think, by Congressman Costa that we do a big business with both Canada and Mexico. We export about $2 billion worth of pork and $2 billion worth of beef to both those countries. So that, obviously, if some duties were imposed against those products, that would hit our hog and cattle industries as well.
Thanks. Over the last couple of decades, we've seen an upward trend in the portion of livestock production that occurs under contract. What are the economic forces that drive that trend, and what does it mean for livestock producers?
Well, of course, you know, most livestock and poultry farms are family-owned and operated, but they are becoming more closely linked to input providers, processors through formal contracts, joint ownership of animals, and vertical integration. Some studies that the Economic Research Service has done suggest that, and these actually are a little dated, so the numbers are probably a bit higher, that more than half of all livestock production is now under some sort of formal and long-term contractual relationships. Some of these contracts commit processors and farmers to specifics volume of production to be delivered at a specific point in time with pricing formula based on product quality, volumes, and market conditions. Other arrangements will pay farmers a fee for growing livestock provided by the contractor, and we've seen that certainly in the poultry model and with some hog production now. These marketing arrangements, and I think it was mentioned again by Congressman Costa, you know, have been shown to have a lot of benefit. GIPSa contracted a study back in 2007 that looked at alternative marketing arrangements that showed that those, a lot of those contracts provided billions of dollars in benefits in terms of, for both producers and then also consumers who are looking for production to be tied to specific consumer preferences.
Thank you, Dr. Glaber. I now recognize Mr. Costa for five minutes.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Glaber, as the Chief Economist for the United States Department of Agriculture, we welcome your testimony. And clearly, by some of your initial answers to the questions by the Chairman, I think you're in part helping make the case that I was making earlier as it relates to my concerns for mandatory labeling, MCOOL, as well as for the impacts of GIPSa. Let me ask you, with regards to MCOOL, has your office estimated the cost of implementation based either on the 2008 Farm Bill or on the, now, the 2014 Farm Bill? I know we just implemented it a couple of months ago, but are you dealing with that?
We are dealing with that. As the Chair mentioned, we have a specific.
Right.
... looking at it. We're looking at it. I don't have answers for you right now, but we are looking at that, certainly.
Okay, so both for 2008 as well as for 2014?
Well, I think it's hard to look at the 2013 rule without considering the 2009 rule. The 2013 rule, as you know, deals specifically with the commingling issue, but the labeling issue itself, you know, and there was some analysis.
So would it be safe to say, would it be safe to say that the rules are the propagation of the rules have not been subject to an economic impact analysis?
Well, that's not entirely true. Both rules, I mean, there were significant rules, and as such, they were required to have cost-benefit analyses associated with them.
What does the Department believe, and I know it may be a bit out of your area, of the perceived consumer benefit as a result of mandatory?
Well, in fact, I think the economic analysis that was done at the time of the 2009 rule and the 2013 pointed out that there is no direct evidence of consumer benefits, quantifiable benefits.
Well, and that, I mean, if it's not benefiting the consumer and if it's not benefiting the industry, my question is, what are we doing? Assuming, let me move on here, because that, I mean, I wouldn't go out on a limb to predict what the World Trade Organization may or may not do, but based upon previous decisions, it seems to me that it's likely that we may not have a favorable ruling under the current structure. At what point, if in fact, and you talked about the timelines, how will we respond if in fact trade retaliation takes place?
Well, a couple of things. One is, you know, the case certainly isn't settled, and, you know, certainly the USTR attorneys feel they have a good case that they've put forward here.
Well, I've gone through amber light and the other, with Brazil and other stuff where we thought we may have a good case.
Yeah, I understand your point. Again, with the timetable, you're really talking about, again, if you go through an appeal process and presuming a loss on the appeal process into arbitration, you're really talking about 2015 or so.
But why don't we, how about a different idea, Plan B? Why don't we maybe at that point cut our losses?
Well, that certainly, one always has, at any one of these junctures, has the ability to make a decision whether or not to move forward.
All right. Well, I think for those of us in the subcommittee and those in the full committee that think that this in fact may occur later this summer, it's appropriate that we revisit this and maybe apply a little common sense and look at an alternative if in fact we get an unfavorable ruling, it seems to me. I know that's up on the higher on the food chain level in terms of decision-making, but let me move on to RFS standards quickly before my time runs out. Feed costs are critical concern of every element of the livestock industry. I made the comment that I think these impacts of RFS standards have been price-distorting. Would you comment, please?
Well, I think there's no question that the ramp-up in ethanol production over the period 2005 to 2009 had a big impact on feed grain costs.
When you go from 12.5% of the production to ethanol to 40%, it seems to me it had a significant impact.
Well, over that period, corn use for ethanol grew annually by about 750 million bushels. Now, not all the price impacts over that period can be tied to ethanol. There were a lot of other things going on in world markets. But understand, too, that about a third of that corn use for ethanol comes back in the form of feed, in the form of distilled dry grains. However, I think it did take the industry a little bit of time to work that into feed rations, and also it works better for some species rather than others. And so I think what you are seeing since about 2009 is ethanol production has been flat, and again, due mainly to the so-called blend wall, that we have, the corn use for ethanol number has been flat at around roughly $5 billion bushels going into ethanol, again, a third of that coming back. I think as we've seen a rebuilding of stocks, certainly we're seeing those corn prices come down in feed costs, but there's no question in my mind that certainly this has been, was a big driver from particularly over the period 2005 to 2010.
Thank you. My time's expired, and if there's a second round, I'd like to get into the GIPSa question. But clearly, we appreciate your testimony, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank the ranking member. Now recognize the gentleman from Texas, Mr. Conway, for five minutes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Glaber, thanks for being here. On the GIPSa rule and the effect it might have on these livestock alternative marking arrangements, can you talk to us about what the effect of the GIPSa rule proposed would have on those arrangements and what economic impact that would then have on consumers as well as producers?
Well, frankly, if the final rule that was published was a lot, lot different than the proposed rule that was published back in, what, 2009 or 2010? The one in 2010, I think, would have, there were a lot of concerns that that would have impacted AMAs, or these alternative marking arrangements. The rule that was put out in, what, I guess, 2012 or 2013, I'm sorry, I don't have the dates in front of me, was stuck mainly to the provisions in the statutory provisions in the 2008 Farm Bill. So I think with one exemption, that being the tournament system, I think there were some things that would have affected the tournament system for poultry producers, but because of appropriations language, et cetera, GIPSa is not implementing those provisions.
Well, that's, we understand, but what would be the economic impact if in fact the interpretation on these last round of GIPSa rules did in fact eliminate AMAs? What would be that?
Well, there's, yeah, I think that the proposed rules at the time, a lot of the concern that were expressed would be that the cost would be quite high, that is, mainly in the loss of AMAs.
Costs to whom?
If there's potential for, I think, the one thing that a lot of processors and others pointed out is the potential impact of litigative risk, and because of that, that it would be a lot easier just to drop the marketing arrangements and go to more standard prices.
Earlier in your testimony, there were billions of dollars involved with those billions of dollars to the benefit of consumers as well as this system, with those have been lost in that regard?
To the degree that...
Try not to word your mouth.
Again, and this is just doing the reverse of the studies that say that there, if indeed these markets arrangements went away. I mean, I think the, you know, there's no question, and I think that was certainly considered when they went, when the Department went through with the final rule.
Okay. The AFAS is considering beef imports from Brazil. I'm getting a lot of concern and anxiety expressed by an awful lot of beef producers and others. Can you, and again, they're going to go through all kinds of science and everything else, but can you talk to us what you think the economic impact would have in an outbreak of foot and mouth disease, particularly if it migrated into the feral hog population in Texas, and how hard that would be eradicate, and then what would be the overall economic impact in your view?
Yeah, Congressman, I know.
If we got it wrong, and in fact it was transmitted.
I know there's a lot of concern in the industry with the proposed rules to allow imports of fresh frozen beef in from Brazil and Argentina. In regards to Brazil, AFAS conducted a risk analysis of the region and concluded that beef could be safely imported. In regards to Argentina, they conducted a risk assessment and concluded FMD was not present in Patagonia. Now, they allow comment on these rules, they extended the comment period. I believe the comment period just closed within the last week or so, and so we have received a lot of comments from concerned parties. People will, AFAS will be certainly looking at these comments and will determine.
But you're the chief economist. Can you give us some sort of a scientific wild guess as to what the economic impact would be?
Well, the economic, if you had an outbreak of FMD, would be pretty severe. I mean, we know.
Pretty severe, a scientific term.
Yeah, you want me to round that?
If you would, put some zeros on that one.
Well, I haven't, I don't have a ready answer for you, but I can tell you that what the UK went through. They went through fairly large destruction of their herd, and that was pretty substantial. However, I think it is really important to recognize that, you know, we keep stressing to other countries to base import decisions and any sort of things based on sound scientific principles. And I think that, you know, when we have an outbreak of AI or when we have a problem like the instance of BSE, we spend a lot of time going to countries explaining why they should be using scientific methods. And I think that's what AFAS is trying to do here. Now, I understand there's a lot of concern about this, and presumably, we're going to see a lot of that concern and people, whatever evidence they can bring to that, hopefully, you know, this will all be considered when AFAS is doing these rules and taking into account.
Well, I agree with the sound science. It's hard to defend it, to export American stuff and not defend it on the imports, but appreciate that, all those zeros in that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yield back. Thank you, sir.
The gentleman yields back. I recognize the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Scott, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go back and visit what I think is probably one of the top most crucial issues facing the future of agriculture, and that is our fuel and our energy. And I want to ask you what you think our future direction has to be, because we're getting mixed reports on ethanol versus fossil fuels. But the one thing we all know is that fossil fuels, one day, is going to run out. It is finite. And so we have the alternative here of ethanol, but my issue is, I want to ask you two questions here. How can we really answer and respond to? How can we really answer and respond to the vast growing needs of fuel demands for agriculture given corn, which is arguably our most versatile product for feed, now for energy and for feed at the dinner table? The price of this corn has gone up in the last seven, eight years from about $2.25 a bushel to closer $400, $4, $4 a bushel. So, and then now, we have the debate that in some sectors, the corn, ethanol corn produces even a greater threat to the environment than petroleum. Now, I want to get your opinion on this because it could be the petroleum industry wanting to set the stage for the way they want to go versus the corn industry. But seriously, Dr. Glaber, can you really tell us just how serious this situation is in this corn versus ethanol? Because right now, we in the United States, we import and we use, well, we use 18.8 million gallons of oil every day and of that, we import 12 million gallons. So, this is the dilemma. How, how, what is the truth in this?
Well, Congressman, you allow me to, as every good economist, I have several arguments and, and, and this, this allows me to expound on it, on it a bit more. I think that, that one way or the other, I think what we've seen is, is ethanol is here. I mean, it, corn-based ethanol is a vibrant industry and I would argue that you may focus on looking at the renewable fuel standard. The fact is ethanol is priced competitively to gasoline, that blenders use it for octane reasons and other things. There are constraints certainly with a blending constraints and whether or not that goes beyond that, I think is anyone's guess over the next several years. But when you see that ethanol is priced competitively to gasoline, not just here, but in foreign markets, it goes a little bit towards explaining why ethanol exports have actually been strong as well. And I think that ultimately, you, what you did see under the renewable fuel standard and this big growth is a capacity was built. And right now, we have a capacity for production of around 14 and a half, 15 billion gallons of ethanol annually and producers, I think those producers are going to continue to produce ethanol from corn as long as profit margins are there and profit margins have been there. And I think that one way or the other, it's a, it's a part. Now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What about the impact of land? I mean, it is the land that we have to increase to, to produce more corn. Price of land has jumped up now to about $9,000 an acre, putting a fantastic limit on trying to get beginning farmers in. I mean, the more corn and, that we grow, the more we rely on that. Corn requires land and the more land you use for corn, the less you use for others and the price escalates.
Well, well, two things about that and, and I get back to the fact that, that I, since about 2010 or so, we've been pretty flat in terms of additional corn use for ethanol. We've been at around 5 billion, so that's been fairly flat and we're expect, with yield growth, that means less land actually will be going into.
Okay, I have one, just one second, but I wanted to get your opinion on this latest news about corn, ethanol from corn having a greater negative impact on the environment and climate and all of that than petroleum, which in my own opinion, I just can't see that. But I'm sure you've heard of these competing reports coming out. What say you about that?
Well, there's, yes, there's a lot of studies that are out there and I, it would depend on which one you're talking about, but I think it's clear that, that at least of the analyses that have been done, it suggests that the so-called indirect land use that of bringing, by virtue of the fact that we're growing more corn here, that we're creating demand for other commodities like soybeans in other countries that are creating, you know, for example, Brazil tearing down forests which emit, you know, greenhouse gas emissions or whatever. I think the, the, the studies have tended to, to show that those impacts are likely less than what people thought maybe five years ago. Now, granted, a lot, there's a lot of uncertainty in these estimates anyway and, and small changes in terms of what you think about yield growth or what you think about yield growth in US or what you think about yield growth in, in Brazil or some other part of the country, world can impact these analyses. And I know in this body, we had a big hearing on this about three or four years ago and, and so, I, I think that the studies show that the impacts, for the most part, the studies are concluding out that the impacts are less than others thought, but there are other issues like water quality, other things that people bring up, but I, I'd be happy to chat further on this with you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the extra time, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Gentleman yields back, recognize the gentleman from Iowa, Mr. King, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate your testimony, Dr. Glaber, and this, this subject that was brought up here by a couple of my colleagues, generally from the other side of the aisle on the ethanol issue essentially directs my discussion as well. And I just punched a calculator here, I actually went on the internet and I, what, what kind of corn increases have we seen in the memory of my lifetime? And when I heard the gentleman from California say that corn is, we were using 12 and a half percent of our crop at one time for ethanol, now it's 40%. That number, I guess, actually 38% of, of our crop, but I, I heard you say that a third of that's coming back. Could you explain that to the panel, please?
Well, what, in, in the ethanol production process, you know, you, you convert a bushel of corn, you, you get ethanol out of it at around 2.7, 2.8 or so gallons, but what, excuse me, with that comes about a third of that volume comes back in the form of, of a byproduct and it's something called distilled dry grains, which.
Let me define that just a little more precisely.
Sure.
And, and that is this, that a bushel of corn breaks down into about three different parts, starch and protein and CO2. And the CO2 is a byproduct of ethanol production, but it's also a byproduct of feed consumption. So I would submit that it's more accurate to say about half of it comes back because a third of the product goes off into the air in CO2, whether you feed it or whether you convert it into ethanol. And I wanted to, I wanted to submit that into the record for discussion and actually ask your response to that.
I, I'd have to look at the, typically just on, on a matter basis, I've been focusing, we focus, tend to focus on about a third in terms of the volume of that.
I'd ask if you could come back to me and perhaps the panel with their response to that.
Sure.
Because I, I think it makes, it makes a difference and we have quadrupled the corn production in my memory, in my lifetime and we're watching as yields have gone from 80 to 100 bushel, starting back in that time in my memory up now to where there's a strong prediction to 300 bushel and I have neighbors that are disappointed if they don't do 200 anyway. I think that's the, the market distortion of this that was addressed by the gentleman from California. Do you agree with that statement that corn going into, into ethanol is market distorting?
Well, I think corn going, certainly the rap, the ramp up that we saw from 2005 to 2010 had a big impact on the, the increase in corn prices and soybean prices. Now, not all, we saw a big impact, we saw a lot of growth in, in world demand, we saw high energy prices, a whole range of factors, but you can't, I, you know, I, I, people ask me about that and I think if we were, if, if I were to tell you that corn exports increased from 1 billion bushels to 5 billion bushels and then say there was no impact on corn prices, you'd look at me like I was crazy. And I think you have a similar thing going on with ethanol, but it's not the only thing going on with corn prices.
I, I agree and, and don't I recall that petroleum prices shot up a lot more than grain prices did during that period of time?
Corn, petroleum prices hit record levels over that, particularly the run-up to 2008.
Corn prices did, but also petroleum prices shot up to record levels. And if we're going to accept the premise of the gentleman from California that it was market distorting on grain prices because of ethanol consumption from corn, wouldn't we apply also the same formula that it was market distorting to gas prices and that they would have gone up a lot more had we not had those, those billions of gallons of ethanol into the marketplace?
Well, and just to build on a, a point I made earlier, that is ethanol has been priced very competitively to gasoline. The fact is, I think the long-term, what, what happens in the ethanol market will largely be determined by energy prices and if, if oil prices continue to go up, then there's going to be demand for alternative fuels like ethanol.
And it's true that a little over a year ago, when I did the look at this, 24% of the domestically produced liquid fuel that's burned in gas burning vehicles was corn-based ethanol. And, and can we, could you speculate as to whether we took, if we took 24% of a supply of any of the commodities, whether it be the gentleman's rice or whether it be the corn or the beans, if we took 24% out of that marketplace, what would happen to the market prices?
Well, you'd see increase.
Dramatically.
Yeah.
We'd agree dramatically. And so, I just quickly asked this question as I, as to watch this clock tick down. I was interested in your comments on COOL, I just make the comment that if the administration would strongly come out and support the voluntary or the repeal of COOL, I think we could get this done in the House and the Senate and it would bypass a lot of this discussion and it would save billions of dollars and it'd be a lot better deal to do with our trade partners. But I wanted to ask you the economic question and that is, on the egg issue. If California is successful in doubling the size of cage sizes and infrastructure for the egg producers in this country by regulating all of America from California by state statute, what happens to the requirement for infrastructure investment on the part of all egg producers in America?
Well, certainly the, the concern, I, I know at the time, the, the state regulations were being debated and going into force, there was a lot of concern among the California egg producers about what those costs would mean for them and, and the additional costs on egg production. And so, I, I frankly haven't looked at the individual studies as, as closely, I'd be happy to get back with you on that, but anytime you put in specific standards like that, there, there are costs. Now, you know, weighing that against what the benefits are for consumer is, is the other side of that and again, I don't have any good numbers for you.
I would appreciate it if you would, to get back to me on that and I'd just point out that doubling the infrastructure size doubles the cost and that's the report I get back from them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Gentleman yields, recognize the member from Oregon, Dr. Schrader, DVM, for five minutes.
Well, I'll actually pass, Mr. Chairman, since I was unable to hear the testimony, defer to my colleague from Connecticut.
Outstanding. Recognize Mr. Courtney from Connecticut for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Schrader. I'm going to give you a break, Dr. Glaber, from corn for a few minutes and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, you know, USDA has done some research about consumer demand for local meat in poultry, which has shown that it's a pretty hot item for consumers and, and even in Connecticut, you know, we're experiencing that and hearing all about it and it's, I think, a pretty exciting development, particularly for, you know, farmers all across, smaller farms all across the country. The biggest sort of challenge that I hear a lot about, and I, I'm sure I'm not alone, is, you know, the challenge of trying to process, you know, livestock in, in places that aren't, you know, part of the big sort of supply chain of, of large meat producers. And again, given the fact that USDA has sort of confirmed this trend in terms of consumers, you know, I was wondering if you could talk about whether or not, you know, USDA has some ideas and prescriptions about trying to really take advantage of this really, I think, pretty exciting opportunity.
Right, Congressman, and you're absolutely right. If you look at, at meat processing, it's, you know, it's a low margin business and you know, the successful ones, you need a lot of throughput, but you weigh that against what's been going on generally across the, the country in terms of increased demand for local foods, those sorts of things, you, you clearly have a lot of people interested in that. Now, the, the problem with a, you know, local processor is, you know, they have to deal with all the same issues everyone else does, they have to deal with the same regulations, food safety regulations. FSIS, I think is, is, they have a, now a website, you know, or a special, special place on their website oriented towards small and very small processors to go through all the regulations, to make sure that everyone's aware of that. That alone is, is actually a fairly big cost of just knowing what you got to do. They, they are, they have some local food outreach efforts underway and, you know, I would say that's true for producers as well. I mean, you look at, at getting certification for grass-fed, you know, if you're a small herd, you know, under 50 head, is, those are, those are costly processes and AMS has been putting forward a lot of effort to try to make those more accessible. They're on the verge of announcement of a, a small and very small producer program that would certify for those sorts of things. So, how to address these niche markets and make it so that they can do a better job in a, in a less costly way, I think particularly for kind of getting through the morass of regulations and all of that, to, to understand that better and, and to know kind of how to do it. I think at least FSIS seems like they're, they're, they have a pretty strong outreach effort that underway right now.
The Cooperative Interstate Shipman Program also seems to be a way of trying to aggregate, you know, resources so that.
Yes.
You know, in a place like New England, for example, that, you know, a collection of, of small livestock producers could, you know, have a proximate facility to go to. Again, it seems like that's a, a program that USDA can also help kind of, you know, promote.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And you mentioned Economic Research Service, just last year, last summer, put out an excellent report on local foods and local processors that, I'll get you a copy, is very good. They have a lot of case studies about how a lot of these businesses face all these, these additional costs, but then found ways through it and, and are seemingly thriving right now.
Gentleman yields back, I recognize Dr. Yoho, DVM, for five minutes. Gentleman from Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Glaber, I appreciate you being here and your testimony. Going back to the RFS, I hope for a complete repeal of that, but if not, in times of uncontrolled, uncontrolled climate and growing conditions, what we saw, I think it was what, 2011, 2012?
Right.
When the prices of corn shot up in our area, I think people were selling it for close to 9, 9.50 a bushel, which is unheard of in, in Florida, it was contracted and we saw obviously the price of feed go way up. And in those kind of conditions, can we get the EPA, and I know it's maybe out of your jurisdiction, but would you recommend that they relax the mandate for X amount of gallons, 14 billion gallons, I think it was at the time, to suspend that for a period of time until we can take care of the need of the food source for America?
Yeah, Congressman, I, I remember the waiver request quite well and EPA does consult with, is required by law to consult with USDA during those waiver requests. Part of the problem, problems, well, no, part of the problem is the fact that these are short-term waiver requests and, and in looking at a waiver like that, I don't think you would have seen a gallon less ethanol produced largely because the gasoline blenders, others were using ethanol to enhance octane in gasoline supplies. So they needed, they needed ethanol and they were bidding up the price of ethanol, they were, you know, creating margin, high margins. And I think that that's, that's something that, that again, don't, don't forget, even outside the regulatory structure and some, obviously regulatory structure influences a lot of behavior, but outside the regulatory structure, there's a lot of economics.
Right.
And the fact is, you know, with, you know, trying to get it, with the RFS, I think these gasoline blenders, over time, have utilized ethanol as, you know, a cheaper source of octane. And so, to get rid of ethanol overnight, they would need octane. And so, I think that you, that's one of the reasons I think EPA concluded at the end that the waiver would have very little impact.
Okay, you were saying also too then.
With the gentleman yield?
Yes.
Just point of information, Congressman Goodlot and I had the opportunity here a few weeks ago to meet with the Environmental Protection Agency Administrator and when we talk about the RFS, she said that this is the most difficult rule she's ever had to try to implement. Just put that in the context of your conversation.
Okay.
Most difficult rule she's ever tried to implement.
Well, that brings me up, you were saying that the price of ethanol is competitive. Would it be competitive if it wasn't for the 45 cents per gallon tax credit?
That's gone.
That's gone?
Yeah, that's been gone.
By mistake then.
Few years.
Let me, let me switch over to the foot and mouth disease, the economic impact. You don't have a figure for that other than it's got a lot of zeros behind it?
Well, yes, you know, I, I, I don't have a. Well, yes, you know, I don't have a, no, I don't have a number on that. I mean, it's a legitimate issue, and certainly, again, you can look at countries like Taiwan or look
I did, and I looked at the economic impact on those countries. It ran into billions of dollars. And we looked at a study that had just five of the larger feedlots in America. If it came here, it would be into billions of dollars. And if you look back at BSC, when we had the threat of the outbreak from the cow from Canada that went to Washington, that cost billions of dollars for a non-disease. But just the perception of American livestock or the quality of our beef, and I would urge, if you have any control, to work with us to make sure this beef doesn't come in until they have the safeguards in place that we know 100% as much as we can that it will not infect our livestock in this country. I mean, it's, the livestock industry, especially the beef industry, is such a vital component of our economic sector. And then I wanted to ask you real quickly, on the porcine, the PED, are those hogs covered under the liability, livestock indemnity program?
They are not. And largely, the Act is pretty specific about tying it to adverse weather, unfortunately.
Okay.
And for that reason, we haven't considered indemnifiable under the Act.
All righty. I yield back, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Gentleman yields back. I recognize the gentleman, do you want to go ahead and, okay, the gentlelady from New Mexico, for five minutes, Ms. Luanne Grisham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank Dr. Glaber for being here today. And I'm going to do, take a shift from corn, but continue to talk about how difficult it is to both project out the economics of the industries that we're talking about today in light of things that we cannot control. So in New Mexico, we are, as I'm sure most people are aware, like most of the Southwest, in a significant drought. In fact, while the drought has been occurring for decades, we're in the fourth consecutive year of the most severe drought we've ever experienced. And I don't think that the scientific predictions about where we're headed is positive, so that extreme drought, not just drought, extreme drought conditions are the new norm. Now, given that the livestock industry is a critical part of our state's economic aspect, and given that we've seen in decades and increase in that, more than a 50% decrease decline in the livestock industry, specifically cattle, I'm really interested in what USDA and what your sort of economic predictions, what can states in this situation begin to do that both recognizes that USDA, although if you can, I'm all in, and, Mr. Chairman, I'll launch a bill immediately. If you can stop the drought, that would be great. I'm completely in. Or if maybe this rain from DC can be moved over, I'm in. But short of that, what strategies, both conservation investments and looking at cost issues, supportive investments in controlling the cost of feed, what else can we be doing that enhances our opportunity to continue to grow cattle in New Mexico? And in fact, we've lost families who were growing cattle for generations, who not only can't afford to do it, but have left the state. And bringing them back into this industry, I don't see as an opportunity for us.
Yeah, I think this is a huge challenge. You look at, since 2011, I mean, with the national herd, I think, is down more than 5 million head. If you go to states like New Mexico, Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas, you're talking, almost two-thirds of the losses are in those states alone. I mean, and it has, I mean, you, I can remember about, well, I can tell you, it was 2010, a friend of mine from out near Lubbock, I was talking to him, he says, "It looks like Ireland out here." Now, I don't know if he'd ever been to Ireland, but the fact was, that was the last time it was actually, they had good rainfall, and they just haven't. You look at these, some of the counties there, we have 45% of the cattle herd right now is in areas that are in drought. And while that's down significantly from where they were in 2012, it's still quite high. And what happens is, of course, as you contract, you have problems with processing industry, et cetera. I mean, we lost Plainview, the plant in Plainview, we lost, we're likely to lose, or schedule now, the brawley plant is going to go offline. And that means that you have to ship, if you're a cow-calf guy or whatever, and you need to ship cattle out of the state. And there was an article in the press just about Southern California, you know, cattle producers in Imperial and elsewhere having to move things out to the Panhandle, you know, to get processed. I mean, I think, that's the longer-term issue that I think you have, and that is, how do you turn, and how do you turn that around? Part of the problem with a cow-calf guy is what you need for expansion is you need someone to say, "Okay, well, I'm going to retain these, these animals," and not
And the impact, and I don't mean to interrupt you,
No, no.
The reality is with that, then we see, we continue to see an escalation in beef prices. We've talked about consumer demand, so we've got a problem in managing an industry that we want and need. Any strategies more than, and I appreciate identifying the problems, and if, again, if I had the magic bullet, but are there things that we can start doing as a region that can enhance our opportunity, given this climate, to rebuild some of these herds and to manage some of the beef prices in a way that provides recoverable profit, recoverable building in herds for livestock producers, and also manages this economic issue for consumers?
Yeah, well, I, one is, I'm happy to give that a little thought and get back to you on that. The, I mean, obviously, the easy answer is let it rain, but to get pastures back, and then even then, to get people willing to expand
Correct.
That's going to take time. And when we're looking at a national herd, a national herd, not really expanding until looking at 2016, 2017, you can imagine in areas that have been hard, hard-hit by drought, that that's even tougher.
Well, and, Mr. Chairman, I know that my time is up, but I would really appreciate if you would think about that, respond to me and the committee, because given the nature of this issue, and that we don't control the weather, and drought's probably the new norm, much like some of the commodities investments to manage that effort more productively and economically, there may be some strategies that the committee ought to consider, certainly.
I thank the gentlelady, and I recognize the gentleman from Wisconsin, Mr. Rebl, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Dr. Glaber. I know you've been here a long time, but I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the conversation today. I'm from Wisconsin, and Wisconsin, our number-one export market for agricultural and agri-food is Canada. So my question is going to kind of go right full circle from where we started today and see if I can maybe try to get some clarity for Wisconsin's agribusiness, who are very concerned about the labeling regulations. This is a significant concern for me, as their representative, and for my constituents, given that Canada is Wisconsin's largest export market. Is your economic analysis going to consider a state-by-state impact of the COOL regulations? And by the way, for Wisconsin, it's $1.2 billion?
Senator, certainly, we, Congressman, certainly, we can, we can look at state-by-state impacts. I mean, what's hard is to get the individual movements out of those states, but in looking at aggregate effects, one can then back off, certainly proportionate impacts. I understand, having lived in Wisconsin, I understand, you know,
It's a big deal.
proximity and other things, the importance of Canada as a market.
Yeah, it's really important, and any type of retaliatory move by the Canadians would be devastating to Wisconsin's agribusiness. It'd be, it's hard to make up $1.2 billion of export volume, you know, and so I think it would be helpful, and, Mr. Chairman, if it'd be okay with you to submit the data for the record?
Without objections, ordered.
Okay. And I don't think it's just Wisconsin, but obviously, because I'm from Wisconsin, and I'm so much aware of what's been going on there, and the amount of effort to try to get some type of trade parity with the Canadian government, and the work that's been done by Wisconsin farmers to really enhance their products to the Canadian consumer. And so to the degree that you could drill into the data further and provide it for us, and I realize it's difficult for you to comment on some of this because of what's going on at WTO, but, yes, we do have an obligation, I think, in many respects, to follow our trade rules, and so, but I really do appreciate you being here and doing that. So, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll yield back.
Gentleman yields back. I recognize Dr. Schrader, the gentleman from Oregon, for five minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Following up on my colleague from Wisconsin's remarks, COOL has had a huge impact already in the Pacific Northwest that I come from, and I was talking to a firm the other day, and they've already seen $2 million hit to their operational line and $2 million hit to their margin line. And it's kind of devastating if you're from one of the border states or border regions of this country. I would hope that there be some flexibility within the administration to look at some simple changes that might enhance North American beef operations that are just intermingled by the very nature of the global market that we see right now. We're not talking about Australia, New Zealand, China, Japan. We're talking about Mexico and Canada are historically long-term trading partners. So anything you could do in that regard, Mr. Glaber, shed a light on some of those problems would be helpful.
Sure. Well, and as you mentioned, particularly, I think, those countries that are bordering, both Mexi, are those states that are bordering Mexico and are close to Mexico and Canada, that's where a lot of that sourced live animal trade has been going, and we know that processors are having to make adjustments there, and just the sheer decline in volume has to be made up somewhere, or you're looking at reduced processing. And at a time when overall processing numbers have been going down just because of the decline in the herd, et cetera. But, you know, I think in all fairness, at least, I think the position has been, because of the first WTO ruling, that the decision to put forward the 2013 rule, it was felt that that's what was needed to come into compliance with the WTO ruling. Now, well, that's what obviously is being decided in a compliance panel and will be ruled upon in June or later this summer.
Well, and the retaliation would be devastating. We know from the Mexican trucking issue, much likely what's going to happen both in Mexico and probably similar things in Canada. Switching gears a little bit to the trade issues, that's a real important, hopefully a great opportunity for American agriculture, but concerned about, you know, some of the opportunities that do not seem to be forthcoming so far, wondered if you could shed a light or had any insight, or using USDA's influence to deal with Canada on the dairy issues, for instance, Japan on the beef issues, and making sure Australia and New Zealand don't devastate the sheep industry and lamb industry here in our country.
Well, I have to tell you, you know, if we were having this hearing 25 years ago, the only thing we'd be talking about is imports or disposal of surplus production. I mean, it's amazing the turnaround, and you look at how important pork exports are to the, you know, hog producers, how important beef exports are, how important dairy exports. I mean, dairy, look at, you know, we're looking at, I know it's not a hearing about dairy, but record dairy exports. So you look at countries like Canada, that we view as potentially very attractive markets for US product, and dairy is one of the few commodities that are outside of the custa. And particularly for TPP, you look at Japan, and then I think, you know, looking beyond that, I mean, the idea is, you know, hopefully, you would see other countries come in, and you look at countries like China and others that have been growing markets for products like dairy products. I think this is very important for the overall health, long-term health.
My question basically is, you know, is USDA weighing in heavily so that, we don't want a lot of people in a TPP that aren't willing to play on a level field. Japan, historically, has been very, very restrictive and very unopen to American agriculture. You know, I'm worried about flipside of that whole discussion in New Zealand and Australia that
Yeah, no, I think the key to TPP is have an ambitious round. I think there's no question about that. You want to get the most access you can, and that's, I think, where the press has been, and the fact that we've had, haven't been able to quite reach a deal with Japan is we're pushing for a much more aggressive outcome.
I guess it wouldn't be right to not comment on the RFS like everyone else has at the end of the day. Just, you know, your testimony states pretty clearly that the increase in feed prices can be associated, obviously, with, you know, the RFS standard. Would you say that's an accurate statement?
Well, as I, you know, what I would say is that I think that increased
Keep dancing.
Increased feed grain prices certainly have been due to the, in part, due to the increased ethanol production. Now, how much of that's due to RFS? How much of that's due to high energy prices, I think, is a matter for discussion, because certainly, over that period, energy prices have propelled a lot of this.
Well, I think we're going to hear from the next, well, I got to finish up here, that the next panel will tell, I think, every single livestock outfit's going to
I know.
suggest that there's
I've read their testimonies.
significant and very direct correlation between the increase in feed and the RFS standard. With that, I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Schrader. Recognize the gentleman from Texas for five minutes, Mr. Nagabauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Glaber, thank you for being here today. I want to go back and make sure, the question was asked to you a while ago, and I want to make sure, just for the record that I understood, when you were asked if there was any benefit, COOL had any benefit to the consumer, I believe your answer was no. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me clarify that a little bit, because I think
Well, I'll
Well, no, 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 please, let me, if you don't mind, just take a second.
Be short.
And all I was going to say is that, you know, a lot of consumers will say in surveys where they ask about that, they'll say, yes, they'd like to have the information, they'd like to have more information about products, including origin. The difficulty where, and what USDA concluded, looking at a lot of the studies, is the willingness to pay. Are you willing to pay for that? And there, the answer is no, they're very negligible.
So the answer is no benefit to the consumer. So then, the other part of that, the ethanol, you said was a vibrant industry, is that right?
I'm sorry, vibrant?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
You said it. But, you know, in my district, and I don't know what it is about in my district, but every ethanol plant in my district
Is shut.
is gone bankrupt.
Yeah, well, you have to have access to cheap feedstocks, and, you know, and I think you have seen fluctuations in that market.
Yeah. So I want to go back then, you know, to the COOL issue, you know, don't see the benefit. We've got our trading partners, our largest trading partners now, you know, threatening to impose tariffs on our country. And, you know, I think one of the things, the livestock producers in my area are going through, as you mentioned a while ago when you were talking about Lubbock, Texas, I am from Lubbock, Texas, and we're going through a terrible drought. The herds are way down, and the feedlot numbers, you know, are shrinking, and it's going to take a long time to be able to, you know, to build these numbers back up when it rains again. And, you know, I think the producers in my area are feeling very vulnerable in the sense that, you know, they've got this COOL issue, you know, cloud hanging over them, they've got the drought, and now, you know, they're concerned, you know, about this Brazilian beef and the potential to bring, you know, hoof-and-mouth disease to this country. You know, I think, I think the question I have is, when you did the analysis for Brazil, now, I understand you used the qualitative method, but when the analysis was done, for example, in 2002 for Uruguay, they used the quantitative analysis. Some people speculate that the qualitative analysis is fairly subjective, and that the quantitative analysis is a more thorough. As an important issue as this is, why would we have used a different analysis than we'd used previously?
Congressman, you raise a good question. I can't answer it. FSIS did that analysis. I'd be happy to get back with you with a more complete answer on that.
Well, I just think that we're at a very sensitive time here with particularly that industry, and that these decisions should not be made lightly, and because I think in many cases, a lot of our cow-calf operations are struggling to stay viable, and obviously, that, as you mentioned, moves up the food chain, so to speak, has impact on the processors and the feedlots, and the economic consequences of, you know, these sanctions, or if we were to have an outbreak in this country, that would be astronomical and very detrimental to the industry, and, you know, quite honestly, to my district.
Well, first, and I, sorry, I misspoke. I said FSIS, of course, I meant Of course, I meant AFIS. But again, AFIS feels—they feel strong about the fact that they've done a scientific—good scientific job that will hold up to scrutiny. Now, again, I think that we've seen a lot of comments. They'll be looking at that. And again, I get back to the fact that just like, you know, we are concerned about certainly bringing in a disease that could potentially be devastating, we also want to make sure that we're not just using a precautionary principle to keep things out, because we want to be held by the same standard elsewhere. And I—again, I don't say that to minimize one or the other, I think, but to get back to the fact that I think this has to be based on sound science.
Well, I do agree. And I'm pro-trade, but the stakes are very high that if we don't get this right, that there would be consequences here. And I just—if we're—
Yes, I would agree with that.
If we're using different methods, you know, I think the explanation of why we use different methods is probably in order.
Gentleman from Texas yields back. Recognize the gentleman from Pennsylvania, Mr. Thompson, for five minutes.
Chairman, thank you. Thank you for hosting this hearing. Dr. Glauber, thanks for attending and sharing your information. I just go with one question, because I've got to get down the hallway to resources for a vote. And it's the opposite of drought. It's where we do have water. I—you know, with the release of the new waters of the U.S. rule, there clearly is an enormous amount of confusion on how the rule might impact agriculture and private land ownership. Is the USDA considering any analysis of this new rule and how it might impact the agriculture community?
We are looking at the rule. We are consulting with EPA, and so we will be looking at it in more detail, yes.
Okay. Any early indications? EPA seems to be talking about, at least their early releases, that although I have not found the substance to back it up, that this was not going to change any agriculture practices, it should improve things. But there doesn't seem to be any substance to that, at least so far, that's really been any evidence to really substantiate—
Well, and certainly, our USDA has been working with EPA on that to try to clarify those rules, to try to—I mean, that is what certainly our officials have been saying as well. And I think that the more clarity that can be laid out there, the better for producers. So there is some certainty, so they aren't operating under some cloud.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Glauber. Chairman, I yield back.
Gentleman yields back, and we are almost complete. Dr. Glauber, I have just two quick follow-up questions. One of them is on behalf of the ranking member, and he asked me to ask this question in his absence, as he is over, like many of the members, in doing dual duty today, and he's in financial services right now. But his question was, what exactly do you propose that would allow GIPS to promote fair business practices and protect competitive markets but not cause undue harm to the industry?
Well, I think that GIPS has put forward what was in the final rule. They—again, I think in the main stuck to most of the provisions that were called out for and put in place by stat—or that were explicitly mentioned in the 2008 Farm Bill in terms of statute. It's a delicate balance, I think, because what you want to do is you want to ensure that there's fairness in the marketplace. And I think, you know, certainly the Packer and Stockard Act charges GIPS for overseeing that. So you want to do it in a way that ensures that everyone is treated in a way that isn't discriminatory. But at the same time, what you want to do, obviously, is do it in a way that you aren't causing—prohibiting new practices to emerge or whatever. And I think that that's the balance that—I think when the secretary looked at moving forward from the proposed rule to the final rule, he said a lot of these things look like, just given the comments that we would receive and other things and analyses that we had done internally, at that point suggested that the costs were greater than he had first believed or had understood. And that was one of the reasons why we went forward in the final rule with, you know, with a much more shorter list of provisions.
Thank you. And a final question. Proponents of mandatory country of origin labeling will say that, you know, consumers actually want to know where their food comes from, but they'll argue that, in fact, consumers are willing to pay a premium for that. If, in fact, that is the case, from your economic perspective—you're an economist, and I'll ask the same question to the producer groups as well—but from your perspective, if, in fact, that were a naturally occurring market dynamic, wouldn't that have been in the interests of those producers of years ago, recognizing that there was a premium that consumers were willing to pay, and they would have voluntarily implemented that, and we would have had this going on forward from then?
The short answer is yes. I mean, I think that, you know, the voluntary country of origin labeling you presume would happen if you thought there was a premium to be gained there. And I think if you were to go into a Whole Foods or, you know, some—you see what sort of—you know, what people are putting on labels that are obviously appealing to consumer interests. And so, yeah, I think that that's certainly the argument. The analyses that have been done, and there was a fairly rigorous analysis done and published this last year that looked at this issue, I believe out of Kansas State, that looked at, you know, the willingness to pay for—the consumers were willing to pay for mandatory country of origin labeling. And the numbers were, again, negligible.
Thank you, Dr. Glauber. And this concludes our first panel. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate your time, your patience, and your cooperation, Dr. Glauber. Thank you very much. The clerk will now prepare the table as I introduce the witnesses for the next panel. We have a number of groups being represented. Seven in total. This will be a big panel. And I will start with a list of those witnesses and who they represent before we recognize them to speak. Mr. Roger Johnson, President of National Farmers Union. Mr. Shane Miller, Vice President, Pork Margin Management, Tyson Fresh Meats, Dakota Dine, South Dakota. Let me say to Mr. Miller, before we go any further, as you know, and I think most people know, that in our neck of the woods, we had some severe weather earlier this week. Devastating, some 15 fatalities, loss of property, and more importantly, loss of life. But displaced families, 3,000 homes at the very least that were destroyed. But I just want to thank Tyson for stepping up and being the good neighbors that they've been in the relief efforts, providing product to families who literally have no idea where their next meal is going to come from as a result of that. So thank you to Tyson for your good neighbor and good stewardship. Dr. Howard Hill, President, National Pork Producers Council, Cambridge, Iowa. Mr. Michael T. Smith, Special Projects Manager, Harris Ranch, Selma, California, on behalf of the National Cattleman's Beef Association. Our next witness, I apologize if I butcher your name, Mr. William P. Ronick.
Correct.
Excellent. Senior Vice President and Economist, National Chicken Council, Washington, D.C. Mr. Clint Krebs, President, American Sheep Industry Association, I own Oregon. I hope I didn't mess up your hometown. My apologies if I did. And Mr. Matthew T. Cook, President and CEO, Norbest, Inc., Washington, D.C., on behalf of the National Turkey Federation. And if our panelists are seated and ready to go, we will begin. I will start with Mr. Johnson, President, National Farmers Union. Mr. Roger Johnson will start with us. And I just remind you that because we have such a big panel, we'll ask you to really watch that clock so that we can give an opportunity for everyone to get—make their comments in a timely fashion. Any extraneous comments, obviously, are part of your written testimony. So with that, Mr. Johnson, you're recognized to begin your testimony.
Thank you, Chairman Crawford, and members of the House Ag Subcommittee on Livestock. My name is Roger Johnson, the President, National Farmers Union. Thanks for the opportunity to testify at this hearing. National Farmers Union is a grassroots organization of about 200,000 family farm members. It is organized in 33 states. Our policy positions are developed by our members. As a general farm organization, we represent producers who raise livestock of all kinds. Even though there are significant differences among them, there are common challenges. Decreasing market competition poses a threat to livestock producers. Consumers are demanding significantly more and more accurate information about the food that they purchase and consume. Arguments that pit the biofuels industry against the livestock growers are counterproductive. And possible trade policy changes that will be talked about here are likely to be harmful. Congress and this subcommittee must carefully consider all of these issues and others. Rural America has lost 1.1 million livestock farms in the last 30 years. You can see this in Figure 2 of my testimony. Since 1980, we've lost 34% of beef operations, 91% of hog farms. There are also fewer meat packers and processors. Economists say an industry is not competitive when the four largest firms control 40% or greater of a market. Very little competition remains if that figure exceeds 60%. Today, the top four beef packers control 81% of the cattle slaughter in the U.S., and the top four swine producers control 65% of hog sales. Fewer buyers result in less competition, greater opportunity for antitrust violations, and a difficult market for the remaining farmers and ranchers. USDA has the authority to prohibit deceptive or fraudulent buying methods by processors and may protect farmers and ranchers if they have been harmed by unfair trade practices. Appropriations riders over the last three years have kept the Department from implementing these basic fairness rules. Future riders that impede enforcement in Patterson Stockards Act must be opposed. I commend Congress for maintaining the current country of origin labeling standards in the 2014 Farm Bill. Consumers want to know more about the food they purchase. Farmers and ranchers are proud of what they produce. Studies have shown 95% of consumers want COOL. We should support efforts to provide consumers with accurate information that will help them make informed buying decisions and remain confident in the integrity of our food supply. USDA completed over 2,000 COOL retail reviews last year, and at least 3,300 are planned for this year. Overall, retail compliance is about 96%. COOL is implemented and is working as intended. Proceedings at the WTO and in U.S. District Court have not found the COOL law to be out of compliance. Even in the event of a decision against COOL, appeals process and compliance periods will allow for adjustments, which likely can be made via regulatory changes. NFU supports biofuel production and the renewable fuel standard. Ranchers understand that biofuels don't just help corn farmers. The success of the ethanol industry helps the rural economy as a whole. In 2006, when the RFS was enacted, net farm income was $57 billion. In 2012, net farm income stood at over $112 billion. Meat production has not declined significantly since the enactment of the RFS, although there have been downturns due to drought, and livestock prices have increased significantly. Biofuels do not significantly drive up the price of food. According to USDA, only 16% of grocery costs go back to farmers and ranchers. And you can look at the attached Farmer's Share report that's in the testimony that we produce monthly at our office, using USDA statistics, talking about the share of the food dollar that goes back to the farmers. In fact, the World Bank found that crude oil is the number-one determinant of global food prices, as you can see in Figure 4 of my testimony. We should reduce our dependence on oil consumption in order to become more food secure, and biofuel production is an excellent way to do that. On behalf of the members of National Farmers Union, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. My full testimony, including our position on trade, foot and mouth disease, et cetera, is included in the document before you, and I'll be happy to respond to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I will now move to Mr. Miller with Tyson Foods. Mr. Miller, you are recognized for five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, it's truly an honor to be here to represent Tyson Foods. We're proud to be an American-owned company from the heartland, employing over 115,000 people worldwide. 100,000 of those individuals are working right here in the United States. We process chicken, beef, and pork, and a wide variety of prepared foods like pizza toppings, soups, and tortillas. We've grown to be one of the largest meat companies in the world, and every day, we work closely with American farmers to help feed the world. In fact, in fiscal 2013, we paid more than $15 billion to over 11,000 farmers and ranchers. While we're certainly focused on the domestic market, as you all well know, international trade is extremely important to our industry and to our business at Tyson Foods. In fact, it's worth noting, USDA concluded that 1.2 million American jobs are produced by exporting animal protein. Protein consumption is rapidly increasing worldwide as living standards rise in many countries. The U.S. livestock and poultry industry is positioned extremely well to serve these new markets. Just to underline this point, last year, 16% of Tyson's beef sales were international. 22% were pork sales from exports, and about a fifth of our chicken sales were to overseas markets. We expect those percentages to continue growing. Without introduction, I'll take a few moments to talk about the state of the meat and poultry industry from our perspective. These are challenging, exciting times for our industry, headlined by near-record prices. Let me first start with beef. We've seen some consumer shift from beef to chicken because of rising beef prices in the last year. This is largely due to a lack of supply. As we all know, the beef herd in the U.S. is at one of its lowest points in decades, and it will likely take years to recover. The drought in major cattle-growing areas has been a major factor in this shrinking supply. Federal biofuels policies have also encouraged the diversion of corn away from feed into ethanol, which has led to periods of tighter supply and price volatility. These pressures on the beef industry, along with others outlined in my written testimony, have been made even more difficult by the recent mandatory country of origin labeling program. This new regulation is just simply bad for our consumers, bad for our business, and bad for family farmers in general. The new rule imposes serious costs and takes away the flexibility to commingle cattle sourced from either Canada or Mexico. Yet it doesn't resolve the challenge by Mexico and Canada at the WTO. This could result in retaliatory tariffs on a wide range of U.S. products, including beef, pork, and poultry. We urge this committee, and we urge Congress, to address the MCOOL issue and implement a policy that both supports an efficient and expanding U.S. beef industry and heads off potentially damaging tariffs on the livestock and poultry industries. Moving to pork. The sector has been affected by the Porcine Epidemic Diarrhea Virus, PED, and quite frankly, has devastated progress for many family farmers across the country. We've estimated that the virus will impact domestic hog supplies by 2% to 4% this fiscal year, with the biggest and largest impact coming in the summer months, where it could be quite a bit more extreme due to the timing of the year. But as I said before, we work closely with family farmers who supply us. And while the industry will get through this tough period, there will no doubt be an impact on supply as we go forward. The good news is that we're seeing higher demand for pork products. In fact, domestic and international sales have increased, and we expect that trend to continue in the coming years. Lastly, chicken is in high demand, and we believe that will continue during the remainder of the year. As we look ahead, we expect chicken supply to respond to rising demand over the next year. That means chicken is positioned to do very well, both domestically and internationally. To conclude, while there are many things outside of our control, there are a number of policy considerations that impact the livestock and poultry industries. Most important among these today are international trade and damaging provisions like the new MCOOL regulations. The U.S. meat and poultry industry is truly world-class, and I urge this committee to help us grow our businesses by promoting expanded trade, as well as reforming policies that restrict our ability to operate fairly and efficiently so that we can continue to provide jobs for thousands of Americans across this great country. Thank you again to the committee for giving me the chance to be here today, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We'll now move to Dr. Hill, National Pork Producers Council. Dr. Hill, you are recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Crawford and Ranking Member Costa for inviting me to testify at this very important hearing. I'm Dr. Howard Hill, Vet-— I'm Dr. Howard Hill, veterinarian and a hog farmer from Iowa, and I currently serve as the president of the National Pork Producers Council. I apologize for Dr. Steve Meyer not being here today as originally planned. I think you would agree, though, that a veterinarian beats an economist any day of the week. MPPC is an association of forty-four state organizations that serves as a voice in Washington for America's 69,000 pork producers. Last year, those producers marketed more than 111 million hogs, which provided 23 billion pounds of safe, nutritious pork to the world, generated gross receipts of $15 billion and personal income of $21 billion, and added $35 billion to our gross national product. The United States exported more than $6 billion of pork in 2013, which added about $54 to the price producers receive for each hog marketed. The U.S. pork industry is responsible for more than 550,000, mostly rural, jobs in the United States. But all of those positive numbers could change because of a couple of issues now facing the pork producers. First, U.S. market hog production declined because of a sharp reduction in the number of weiners and feeder pigs imported from Canada, mostly because of implementation of the federal MCOOL law. Although the MCOOL officially began in September 2009, it caused adjustments in Canadian hog outputs well before that date because U.S. farmers finishing hogs sought domestic animals to avoid the cost and complications of the new law, such as prohibition on commingling U.S.-born and Canadian-born hogs. The U.S. slaughter of Canadian hogs fell by nearly fifty percent because of MCOOL-driven decline in Canadian hogs shipped directly to the U.S. for slaughter. One result of the decline in Canadian hogs was the April 10 closure of the John Merrill Plant in Sioux City, Iowa. There simply weren't enough hogs available in north-south of the United States to maintain the pre-2010 level of packing capacity. The closure cost 1,500 jobs. In addition to the direct economic impact of MCOOL, the U.S. pork industry may have retaliatory tariffs imposed on its products and on a host of other goods if Canada and Mexico win their case against the law, which now is pending in the WTO. While tariffs may not trigger another recession, they would damage the economy and hurt the many hard-working families that depend on trade with Canada and Mexico for their livelihood. The most pressing threat we face, however, is porcine epidemic diarrhea virus, or PED, which now has spread to thirty states. While USDA estimates the disease has killed about 2 million pigs, the economist Dr. Steve Meyer estimates the loss closer to 7 million pigs. That suggests slaughter reductions this summer could be greater than 10%. Such reduction would push U.S. hog prices up by 15 to 25%, and force consumer-level pork prices up 10 to 12%. Retail pork prices already have hit new record highs in March and most likely will rise even higher this summer and fall. Even though a reduced supply may increase pork prices for farmers, I know firsthand that pork producers are not happy about this disease. Producers talk about their PED experience using terms such as devastating, heartbreaking, gut-wrenching when describing its impact on their herds, themselves, their families, and their employees. Additionally, reduced hog numbers mean less feed, less medicine, fewer veterinary services, and shorter hours at packing and processing plants. All these dynamics reduce wages and profits generated by allied businesses. And since many of these businesses are located in small and mid-sized rural communities, this would have a significant negative impact on the nation's rural economy. So what needs to be done about PED? First, it's still not known how PED entered the United States. The pork industry has evidence that two distinct strains of PED were introduced, along with another virus called porcine Delta Coronavirus. The pork industry needs USDA to conduct a thorough investigation on the pathway these viruses use to gain entry into the United States swine herd. The agency should cooperate with FDA, DHS, and other appropriate agencies in this investigation. While the U.S. pork industry has committed nearly $2 million of research for PED, it would like USDA's ARS to bring significant resources to bear on the disease. This research needs to focus on basic viral propagation pathogenesis and control. Development of a vaccine is only one of several important tools to get PED under control. The pork industry also needs the National Animal Health Laboratory Network to have the ability to efficiently electronically communicate and generate the data needed to understand and respond to PED and Delta Coronavirus. The information also should be available for real-time appropriate analysis. Additionally, USDA's ability to implement a coordinated surveillance program should be enhanced. Recently, Secretary Billsack announced an order to require reporting of PED. While knowledge of disease prevalence and movement are important in understanding the epidemiology of the disease, USDA needs to take a thoughtful and measured approach to development of a strategic strategy that is practical, workable, and can be successful. The pork industry is willing to work with USDA. Thank you again for the opportunity to discuss the challenges facing today's pork industry, and I'd be glad to answer any questions of the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. The Chair will exercise the point of privilege, recognize Ranking Member Costa to introduce our next witness.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that courtesy. Our next witness is Mr. Smith, Mr. Mike Smith, who's born and raised in southwestern Oregon, but now calls California his home. He was born on a commercial cow-calf operation, graduated from Cal Poly in California, but then got his master's degree at the Oklahoma State University, for my friends from Oklahoma. He is a manager who focuses on the Partnership for Quality and Marketing Program for Harris Ranch. Harris Ranch in California is one of America's leading producers of quality beef, and Mike does a great job, and he's joined here by his wife and his two children, Sarah, Clayton, and Jessie. They're getting a chance to watch Dad in action, so we welcome Mr. Smith here today.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman Crawford, Ranking Member Costa, and members of the committee. I am here today representing the National Cattlemen's Beef Association, the North American Meat Association, and the company I work for, Harris Ranch. Now, I know that Congressman Costa is very familiar with the company, but for those who are not, let me give you a brief background. Harris Ranch is one of the largest family-owned agribusinesses in the western United States. We operate five primary business entities under the Harris Farms banner. For example, our hospitality division is located equidistant between San Francisco and Los Angeles. We operate 150-room inn in a restaurant complex that will serve in excess of 1,500 meals each and every day. Additionally, we operate a thoroughbred racehorse division, and the fact is, the odds-on favorite this Saturday, the Kentucky Derby, is a horse by the name of California Crumb. That horse's dam was bred by a stallion that stands in our breeding barn. He was born and foaled in our foaling barn, and for the first two years of his life remained at Harris Farms. So suffice to say, we're pretty proud of that horse. Now, I hope I just didn't jinx him for Saturday. Our cattle-feeding division operates one of the largest beef feedlots in the United States with a one-time capacity of 120,000 head. In total, we'll feed in excess of a quarter of a million head of cattle each year. These cattle will then be slaughtered, fabricated, and further processed in our state-of-the-art beef-processing facility that's located roughly 50 miles away from the beef feedlot. Finally, our farming operation encompasses roughly 17,000 acres of ground. In addition to the permanent crops of almonds, pistachios, and citrus, in a normal year -- and I'll highlight that term "normal year"-- we will grow tomatoes, onions, garlic, broccoli, lettuce, asparagus, melons, just to name a few. And the reason I highlighted that key word "normal"-- we haven't had one of those in quite some time. So that will kind of segue into the start of this testimony. I want to start with water, or more correctly, state of the lack thereof. In my home state of California, we're suffering through one of the worst droughts in recorded history. Make no mistake, however, this drought is made even worse by actions taken by federal and state governments to restrict the rightful allocation of water to farmers and cattle producers throughout California, especially those in the Central Valley, a region of the state that grows well over half of the fruits and vegetables in this country. Our concern at Harris Ranch is with a Delta smelt. That's a three-inch baitfish that, because of its listing as endangered species, has profoundly impacted water delivery in the state of California. As a net result, this year's zero-to-possibly 5% allocation of water will result in Harris Farms falloing over 11,000 acres of some of the most highly productive crop ground in the United States. That's two-thirds of all the ground we farm will sit idle this year. The cattle in other states face similar threats with the very real impacts of the Endangered Species Act. The potential listing of the sage grouse unless a prairie chicken will severely impede the ability of cattlemen in the western and high plains regions of the United States to operate their ranches. The undeniable fact is that Congress must immediately reopen the Endangered Species Act and provide relief to the true stewards of the land, this nation's farmers and ranchers. One final issue impacting the beef industry I'd like to discuss with you today is mandatory country-of-origen labeling. As a company, we're extremely upset and, quite frankly, disappointed that Congress did not provide a legislative fix to COOL in the recent Farm Bill. COOL has been a particular burden to the beef industry for far too long now. Proponents of COOL have argued that mandatory labeling would cause the consumer to pay more for U.S. beef. Five years of implementation have proved just the opposite. In fact, a recent Case State study found that the vast majority of consumers don't even look for country-of-origen labeling when buying beef. In fact, most don't even know a COOL label exists, nor did they care. As one of the first branded beef companies in the United States, you would think that Harris Ranch would strongly support country-of-origen labeling, but the fact is, it's just the opposite. Our experience is that our customers are not interested in, nor do they wish to pay a premium for, country-of-origen information. The question then becomes, why continue to implement a law that harms the U.S. cattle industry when the consumer's not demanding it? That question is especially relevant with the pending WTO ruling. Canada and Mexico have consistently ranked as two of the top export markets for U.S. beef. Last year, Canada and Mexico collectively imported just under $2 billion worth of U.S. beef. If we lose access to those markets, they are restricted by the enactment of tariffs, that action will have a profoundly negative impact. In closing, we are perplexed why the government wants to hurt our industry for a simple marketing program that has proven to be ineffective. And let me be clear, COOL is all about marketing. It has absolutely nothing to do with food safety. If it were, then COOL -- and finally, COOL is not a consumer right-to-know issue. If it were, COOL would be applied to all beef and not just that that's marketed through the retail level. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We'll now recognize Dr. William P. Ronick, Senior Vice President and Economist, National Chicken Council. Mr. Ronick, you are recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Crawford, Congressman Costa, members of the committee. We very much appreciate the opportunity to participate in this important and timely hearing on the status of the U.S. chicken industry and the issues that are impacting the poultry industry. On behalf of the National Chicken Council, I appreciate your invitation to provide comments and recommendations regarding a number of vital issues and difficult challenges confronting our industry. U.S. chicken producers and processors will certainly need the subcommittee's support if the chicken industry is to successfully overcome the increasingly broad array of difficult issues and challenges, some of which I will outline in my statement. I am Bill Ronick, and presenting this statement on behalf of the National Chicken Council, the organization that represents companies that produce and process over 95% of the chicken in the United States. The 30-plus vertically-integrated firms that comprise the federally-inspected chicken industry, I can assure the committee, are a very dynamic, forward-looking, and most essential part of America's agribusiness. Most importantly, these companies can be characterized as survivors. They work hard every day to continue to earn that status. As Dr. Glaber said earlier this morning, chicken production this year will reach a record high of 38.1 billion pounds on a rate-of-cookweight basis, 1.8% above 2013, a percentage very similar to what we increased last year. Normally, market conditions -- current market conditions would stimulate production to be somewhat higher. That is a percentage more aligned with the long-run average of about 4% per year. So why are not chicken producers stepping up production to better match the long-term average of 4%? In short, we would if we could, but we can't. Yes, we would like to produce more pounds of chicken if we could, but unfortunately, at this time, we cannot. The basic primary reason for the industry's inability to step up production can be attributed to the problems caused by a failed policy that has been with us since 2006. The devastating impact of an inflexible renewable fuel standard for conventional biofuels, especially following the somewhat unprecedented drought of 2012 that severely reduced corn harvest, continues to have broad and deep ramifications. Very high and very volatile corn prices even prior to 2012, most notably in 2009, when chicken production decreased almost 4% for only the third time since 1950 helped set the stage for the restrained production. Not only did chicken producers have to significantly adjust production downward to survive, but also the negative economic ripple affected the primary breeders. This is the lifeblood of our industry. The primary breeders had to adjust their production also as companies reduced their orders for day-old pullet chicks, and in some cases, even had to cancel their orders. And that inflicted financial pain on the primary chicken producers. The chicken companies will rebuild their hatchery supply flocks to better meet market needs, but until then, the chicken industry will continue to grow production, but it will be at a more measured pace. We are especially aware that increased chicken production at this time and for the foreseeable future would be appreciated by consumers. As we've heard, cattle and hog producers are confronting their own challenges to produce more beef and pork, and at this time, we think many consumers, if not most consumers, are increasingly finding chicken a favorable alternative when a competition provides such an opportunity to better compete. It is frustrating to our industry that we are not able to increase our production, especially when we hear people say it only takes seven weeks to grow a chicken. In the end, consumers are once again paying the price for a biofuels policy and program that is broken beyond repair. Ensured, the state of the industry, at least for those surviving companies, is good in terms of net margins, but the industry continues to be frustrated by the results of an inflexible renewable fuel policy. In the interest of time, let me just mention that a couple of other issues I've listed here. The GIPS rule that was finalized has gone against the instructions of Congress, efforts to defund that Congress has done several times. We think it's important that that rule be permanently defunded. Also regarding international trade, we very much support the prompt passage of Trade Promotion Authority, continued congressional support for a successful conclusion to the Trans-Pacific Partnership and to Transatlantic Trade and Investment Partnership, and continued congressional support for the WTO actions involving U.S. poultry trade with China, India, and Indonesia, and South Africa. The National Chicken Council looks forward to working more closely with the committee so that poultry producers will have a better opportunity to successfully manage the increasing difficult challenges and issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee.
Thank you, sir. We will now move on to our next witness, Mr. Clint Krabs, President of American Sheep Industry Association. Mr. Krabs, you are recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for calling this hearing on livestock issues. Thank you. I'll start over again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for calling this issue on -- this hearing on livestock issues. I'm pleased to visit with you and your colleagues about the status and the priorities of the American sheep industry, ranchers, farmers, and I might add also lamb feeders, lamb processors, wool warehouses, and wool manufacturing, and to some degree, wool textile industries. My wife and I ranch with our son and daughter-in-law in eastern Oregon near the town of Pendleton, which is the home over 100 years ago of Pendleton Woolen Mills, and I'm happy to say they've purchased our family's wool for almost 100 years. But more proudly than that, it gives me an opportunity to be involved in their operation where they hire in their small operation in Oregon over 2,000 employees to process my product. My family deals firsthand with the issues detailed in the American Sheep Industries Association's statement that I'd like to be included in the written record. We have four sheepherds from Peru that are highly trained and a very key part of our operation. We graze part of the year on federal lands, both BLM and Forest Service. We work daily to minimize predators killing our livestock. We're always concerned about the rain, grass, drought, floods, snowstorms. We're constantly in a battle to secure prices for -- good prices for our lamb and wool clip, and yes, Congressman, we struggle to pay our feed bills. Issues such as these were important enough to the sheep industry that 150 years ago, sheep farmers and ranchers joined together and formed the earliest National Livestock Association, called the National Wool Growers at that time. Decisions of our government, and increasingly, decisions of foreign governments, can and do have serious impacts on my ranch and those of my neighbors who raise sheep. That is why I believe your role in representing agriculture and livestock and federal regulation is so critical. I'm pleased to help today.
I'm pleased to help today and pledge the sheep industry's support in the continued fight for Americans' families' farms and ranches. After all, all we do is feed, fuel, and clothe the world. We need the USDA and the USTR to aggressively seek access to export markets for American lamb. The fact that the Japanese market has been closed to American lamb for over 10 years is just wrong. Japan was a top market for us then, and it should be now. It must be a priority for trade negotiations to get American lamb back in play. The same is true for several other global markets that we are not allowed to ship to: Taiwan, China, and the European Union, for example. The U.S. lamb market is among the most open and highly valued markets in the world, yet it seems to me that this so-called free trade era is a one-way street. We ask for an aggressive stance by your government, by our government, to provide opportunities overseas for American lamb. Wildlife Services performs another important role, and we ask for your continued support. The House voted overwhelmingly in 2011 to support the Wildlife Service Predator Program, and we need to be prepared for votes in the future. The witnesses in this hearing are a great example of the program's importance, starling control for dairies and feedlots, feral hog control for the pork industry, the cattlemen are dealing with wolves and a host of other predators, and I'm sure there's many people in this room that spend a lot of time on jet airplanes, and I know none of us wants to be on the jet that sucks a goose. I again commit the support of ASI's membership to you and you, as you address the needs of farmers and ranchers in immigration reform. My wife and I spend a large amount of money and time filling out paperwork and working to keep our herders legal, all to make the H2A program work. In fact, ASI members probably have the most legal workforce in agriculture and have had for over 60 years. I hope this is recognized and respected in any new legislation. I fear that without direction from Congress, our sheepherder provisions will be lost in the rush of regulations, resulting in a third of our sheep ranchers and farmers being forced out of business. Volatility of price has been a key issue for sheep producers, lamb feeders, and meat companies over the past three years. I think it's remarkable that the USDA reported not one complaint from the sheep industry regarding last summer's announcement to the increase of our checkoff rate by 40%. Secondly, USDA continues to be a great partner in marketing our lamb and wool. The National Sheep Industry Improvement Center's financial support has proven valuable in raising money. Mr. Chairman, thank you again for the opportunity to visit with you and your colleagues, and I'll be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krabs. Moving on now, Mr. Matthew T. Cook, President and CEO, Norbest Incorporated, on behalf of the National Turkey Federation. Mr. Cook, you are recognized for five minutes.
Good morning, Chairman Crawford, Congressman Costa, and members of the subcommittee. My name is Matt Cook, and I am the President and CEO of Norbest, an 84-year-old turkey cooperative based in Murano, Utah, and a current member of the National Turkey Federation's Executive Committee. Thank you for inviting me. I have spent my professional career in and around the turkey industry, and I'm proud of the industry's accomplishments and growth. Today, I am here on behalf of the National Turkey Federation. NTF represents all segments of the $29 billion industry, which includes 95% of U.S. processors, growers, distributors, and suppliers. From 2006 to 2013, U.S. turkey producers watched their average feed price cost increase over 125%. To compensate for higher costs of feed, wholesale prices had to increase, and they did. But while feed costs more than doubled, average turkey prices increased by only 26 cents per pound. The cost increases from feeding turkeys with rising costs of corn and soy milk increased the cost to consumers by $1.3 billion last year alone. The total cost increase for all foods was much higher, but that's just on average. Twice in periods lasting about a year each, an unexpected oversupply of turkey brought prices down. Yet our feed costs remained uncommonly high. In those years, all throughout the turkey business, hundreds of millions of dollars were lost. Most companies responded to this crisis by reducing production. At Norbest, we had to cease all production for three months. To this day, on average, feed and food prices remain higher. What Congress does impacts my bottom line, so I ask this committee to remain vigilant about the federal, about how federal energy and agricultural policy play a key role in shaping supply and demand forces that influence food costs. We in the turkey industry are on an eventual losing end when our product prices go up because of higher costs, and thus consumers pay more and eventually buy less. Please insist that your colleagues in Congress consider the full consequences of the policies put in place in both the renewable energy and agricultural arenas. We continue to be challenged with a multitude of issues that impact those of us in the turkey business. As previously mentioned, the renewable fuel standard in its current form has and will continue to negatively distort feed costs for turkey producers until the policy changes. We commend EPA for its proposal to lower the 2014 RVO levels, but the responsibility still falls back on Congress to find a lasting solution to this rigid policy. The proposed modernization of poultry slaughter inspection rule has been scrutinized from every perspective. We feel strongly that science and data compiled over the last decade of the 25 poultry plants currently operating under the system clearly demonstrate that the food produced at these plants is at least as safe as that being produced in traditional poultry plants while maintaining high worker safety standards. NTF is working to improve a proposed FDA food safety rule for feed mills. There is no need for a detailed, expensive regulatory burden when the owner of the animals and manufacturer of the feed are one and the same, as is the case with our vertically integrated industry. In cases like ours, the economic incentive to produce high-quality, safe feed is greater than any possible regulatory incentive or disincentive. FDA has written the rule in a way that exempts one portion of animal agriculture, primarily cattle feedlots, while requiring most other segments, especially poultry and swine, to prepare the costly plans. Tomorrow, NTF will testify in the Senate regarding the propane shortage that caused over 20 states to declare a state of emergency over skyrocketing prices and fear that there was not enough propane to last the winter. We appreciate the leadership of Ranking Member Colin Peterson in evaluating this year's dangerous propane shortage. We survived this year, but the fundamental problem still exists. Once winter conditions kick in, it is too late to fix the shortage without dramatic government intervention. In the interest of time, I would just briefly like to mention some additional issues facing our industry. Immigration reform. There is currently no one bill that is a silver bullet, but it is time to resolve the immigration debate for the good of the country. In order for companies like Norbest to ensure the legal hiring of enough qualified workers using a trusted e-verify program is essential and critical to long-term success. We were disappointed that GIPS provisions were not fixed in the farm bill and look forward to working with Congress to correct. We are very troubled by the news that APA and the Corps of Engineers recently proposed a rule to revise the definition of waters of the United States under the Clean Water Act. Though I know I have emphasized areas of, I have emphasized areas of concern, I want to acknowledge that certain government programs have and continue to play a positive role in the poultry and livestock industry. We anticipate the measures taken in the 2014 farm bill to expand the disaster assistance program. The livestock indemnity program is a critical program for our industry, and with program expansion, turkey growers will be able to utilize the program in the event of a disaster. We also continue to support the equip and reap programs. As implementation begins, we look forward to working with the committee in the area of oversight. Thank you again, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I appreciate all the witnesses that have taken time to be with us today. We'll now begin our round of questioning. I'm going to recognize myself for five minutes to begin. Mr. Miller, I know you were present when I asked this question to Dr. Glaber, but as I said, I wanted to ask it again to the member groups. I know there are those advocates of mandatory country of origin labeling that argue that it's, there's a premium to be paid for that. Can I get your input, your thoughts on if that were the case, why were producers not engaged in that marketing practice years before this was mandated?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's a good question. I would say that's a fair assumption. You know, we're obviously sensitive to whatever our customers want, what our customers' needs are. They're the closest to the consumer, so they're getting the feedback from the consumers through whether it's retail or food service channels. So we're obviously getting that feedback on a pretty normalized basis. There's been no evidence that the consumer is demanding country of origin labeling in meat and poultry. So therefore, you know, to your point, originally, we hadn't gotten any feedback that is necessary.
Okay. Let me follow up on that, since we're on this subject. I know it's difficult to implement, co-mingling being one of the, one of the most, probably most onerous areas with regard to implementation of mandatory. Could you comment on that as a, and maybe just enlighten us from your perspective for those less familiar with beef packing? Just sort of expand on that a little bit and explain some of the difficulties that you run into.
Yeah, it really affects operations in three different phases. If you think of the front end of the plant, in the front end of the facilities, you end up having to increase your amount of sortation and space that's necessary to hold the livestock because you're bringing in various, whether it's product of U.S., product of U.S.-Canada, product of U.S.-Mexico. So you have the various different animals that are coming in the front end of the facility. Once you actually get into the plant, you end up having to deal with a lot more grade changes in cost to process cattle or hogs, may that be. The downtime to stop through the segregation ends up costing us a lot of money as we have several team members that are standing around through the grade changes. On the back end of the plant, the third phase, there's additional space that's needed to segregate, whether that's the various stockkeeping units, the SKUs, whether it's additional capital that's needed to expand material handling out the back of the plant, too. So there's truly three different phases that are affected by IMCOOL.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I find that your operation that you're representing is really pretty fascinating. You call it vertical integration, closed loop, whatever you want to call it, it's very diverse, obviously, and you described it in some detail. But I find it ironic that, you know, while your beef operation is made less efficient through the implementation of mandatory country of origin labeling, I would think that your farming operation then becomes vulnerable to those retaliations from our neighbors to the north and south. Talk about that a little bit and give me your perspective on that.
Yeah, and Congressman, that's a very real concern of the companies as well. You know, I think that if the WTO sides with Canada and Mexico, and if they do in fact have an opportunity to impose tariffs, I mean, I believe they will follow a similar concept that we in the U.S. use, a carousel-type system where they're going to go after and preferentially target other commodities, commodities other than beef, pork, poultry. You know, and so there is a very real potential to have a negative impact on those other commodities, those fruits, nuts, vegetables, that we would potentially try to market into those countries as well.
Excellent. I'm not going to ask any more questions of you because I think probably Mr. Costa will direct some questions your way, so, yeah, some really hard ones. So I want to shift gears just a little bit and talk about transportation, and Dr. Hill, you touched on this. Regarding transportation regulations that you mentioned, does the waiver requirement to take a 30-minute break altogether, or does the waiver waive that requirement to take a 30-minute break altogether, or does it simply prevent drivers from having to include loading and unloading times in their calculations, the eight-hour period?
Yeah, thank you. Right now, we don't have a waiver. We had a waiver last year during the three months of hot weather, and we thought we were going to have a two-year waiver. That hasn't, my understanding, that hasn't been approved, so we may ask for a 90-day waiver for the next hot months. The question you asked, it does include the timing, the time it takes to load and unload livestock.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Now recognize Ranking Member Costa for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Our colleague Congressman McIntyre has another committee that he needs to be at, so I'm going to pass at this point after the next Republican gets a chance to ask his questions and change the order so, to allow Mr. McIntyre to ask his questions and then get to committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, we're going into markup in Armed Services Subcommittee, so I appreciate the consideration. For the record, I've asked Subcommittee staff to submit a question I had for panel one for Dr. Glaber, requesting a response in writing in the next seven to 10 days, and I want to appreciate the Subcommittee staff on that, and that question will be submitted to him. Secondly, for this panel, I just have one question. Mr. Miller, as you know, the USDA recently announced a proposed plan to require mandatory reporting of PED virus cases by pork producers and potentially tracking of animals, given that Tyson Foods is the largest purchaser of independent hogs in the country. And knowing the impact that PED virus has had on the pork industry, do you agree that USDA should go to great lengths to include the pork industry in the formation and implementation of the regulation, and that the regulation should not be subject to any sort of unreasonable time constraints in order to get the program correct?
Yes, Congressman, you're right. We do procure about 97% of our livestock that are fabricated through our facilities on the outside, so we are the largest purchaser of independent livestock in the open market. I would say that in our view, we don't need producers forced to deal with anything that would potentially create artificial disruptions. So therefore, reporting programs need to be practical at the farm level. So the key here is to ensure that they are practical. Obviously, the reporting is good, that we're going to get into reporting process, but it needs to be practical at the farm level so it doesn't disrupt commerce either. And I would leave it to Dr. Hill to maybe get into a little bit more detail, as he's obviously representing the NPPC, but from a Packer point of view, you know, it's key that the reporting programs need to be practical at the farm level.
Thank you. Did you join any subsequent comment to that in the remaining time? Dr. Hill?
We have been working with USDA on this rule, trying to cooperate with them. Our point is, we've had this disease for a year, and it seems now that USDA wants to get a rule in place and implement very, very quickly, in a matter of just weeks, two or three weeks here. And we feel as though to get the buy-in of the industry, we need to progress a little bit slower and make sure that we have a program that is, when we implement it, really does what we want it to do, and that is to help identify where the disease is and to control the spread of the disease. We don't think that it would be beneficial in any way to limit producers' ability to move livestock.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to my colleague, Mr. Costa, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, yields, I recognize the gentleman from Iowa, Mr. King, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the witness's testimony, and I'd turn first to Mr. Miller, and I'm going to reminisce a little bit, and I'm going to ask you whether you will agree with my recollection of the sequence of events. And that is, we passed a farm bill that was, actually, we thought it was 2007, but actually it's the 2008 farm bill. The COOL regulations were testified here were implemented in September 2009. And my recollection of that language in the 2008 farm bill was that it was written vaguely in its requirements so that there would be an option for the Packers to label, say, born, raised, and harvested in a location, as opposed to the specificity of those distinctions. And we left the passage of that farm bill in 2008 with the idea that it was not going to put a constraint on our Packers. Do you recall those events, and I'm just going to ask if you would relate the balance of that, or maybe ask me to finish it, whichever you prefer?
Congressman, I think I'm going to have you finish that one.
Okay, I will. Thanks for the question.
Yeah, exactly. Question back to you.
And my recollection is that we left this committee and the floor passage of the 2008 farm bill with confidence that COOL was resolved in such a way that it was not going to put a bind on the Packers. And I recall a letter that was signed by the chairs of the respective committees, House and Senate Ag Committee, to the Packers that said, "You're not complying with our intent." Not the language with the intent. And my recollection is that the Packers generally agreed that they would comply with the stated intent of the letter, which is why we're talking about September 2009. Any of that inconsistent with your recollection, Mr. Miller?
No. Yeah, Mr. Congressman, I would agree, you know, we never believed that the mandatory country of origin labeling program was necessary because it was never a food safety issue, nor for our retailers and consumers who never demanded it. And with the initial program, the flexibility that allowed us to co-mingle, we could still run our operations to a point that we didn't have to incur additional breaks or sortations. With the current law, with the current process, that's not practical anymore, so those additional costs are ultimately borne on the consumers because those costs are pushed back upstream.
And I would say that, you know, as I've watched this, it was relatively simple in 2008, and it's gotten more and more complex since then. And to this point that I made to the earlier witness- And to this point that I made to the earlier witness, that if this administration would come out strongly in favor of the repeal of COOL, I think we could get this done and get it to the President's desk. And a lot of money's being spent otherwise. I just appreciate your attention to this, and the, but I'd like to turn then to Dr. Hill and your testimony on PED, and we've got a better understanding of the depth of that now. But what is the progress that's being made on vaccine?
We do have an experimental vaccine out there from Harris Labs, but that vaccine is not effective if you vaccinate a sow and then hope to protect the pigs. It does seem to have some value in these chronic herds, helping those chronic herds recover. But this is a coronavirus. Coronaviruses are very difficult to develop a good immune response to, so I think it's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of time. We know that there's at least four major biologic manufacturers working diligently at trying to come up with a vaccine. I know one company, for example, just told me they had 26 scientists working on this. Of course, it's a big plum. If they get one, you know, they'll have a huge market.
And if we're not able to develop a vaccine that's effective, what's the next best method?
Well, then, things that producers are doing now, biosecurity, ensuring that feedstuffs are not involved in the transmission of this disease, which now we know they are, the Canadians proved that for us. So there's a lot of effort in looking at feedstuffs and making sure that that's not a source of transmitting the disease over long distances. We know that when the virus gets into a herd and we have herds, adjacent herds, close by, that there's so much virus produced that it's very difficult to keep it just moving laterally. But we've had this virus jump miles and miles in unrelated herds early, and we think that could have been from feed.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I just wanted to ask a quick question of Mr. Roganek, and I didn't hear real fans of the RFS in this particular panel, which I know is just an odd anomaly. However, your testimony testified to the inflexibility of the renewable fuel standard. And when I heard that, I wanted to give you an opportunity to express that a little bit because even though the renewables fuel standard by statute is relatively inflexible, the EPA has added their own flexibility to it and ratcheted it down dramatically. So do you have any comments you'd make as to the creation of flexibility by the EPA on the renewable fuel standard?
As we're all aware, there were two opportunities, or two requests for waivers, neither of which were successful from our viewpoint. EPA, I think, as your question suggests, is now proposing an adjustment to the renewable fuel standard. As Congressman Costa said, the administrator feels this is one of her most difficult decisions. I would be glad to help her make that decision if she would allow me. I think it was a rather easy decision. But we hope the decision is correct and that there will be some recognition, not just of the blend wall, but the damage that it has done, not just high prices, but the volatility of corn.
Maybe we could join together in agreeing that it was the largest corn crop ever, however. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yields back.
Gentlemen, Yields back, and I recognize the Ranking Member for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to go to Mr. Smith. Smith, you, I thought, did a good job of highlighting the impacts of the drought, especially the regulatory impacts of the drought in California and the production of agriculture products, the fruits and vegetables that we do so good, not only to Harris Ranch, but to agricultural producers throughout California. I want to go back to IMCOOL. At Harris Ranch, what do you believe you're going to have to do in order to comply with the IMCOOL rule based upon, obviously, what happens with the WTO ruling here later this year?
Well, Congressman Costa, we're currently in compliance with the rule, even the revised rule. It has actually added some additional negative impacts on our company in terms of the additional...
How much on costs? Have you did an estimate on the costs?
No, sir. Not a direct estimate on the cost to the company. But it is, and you know what, Congressman? I'll actually run those numbers and get them back to you, but as a company, I can't have that number.
If you could provide them for the Subcommittee, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, sir.
It'd certainly give us a snapshot as to what a premium-sized packing operation that you folks run in California is costing you. The, you heard my statement earlier on, if in fact the ruling is adverse, maybe the point there then is an opportunity to say, "Stop, and let's take another look at this." Would you agree?
Oh, wholeheartedly, sir. I mean, I think some common sense needs to prevail somewhere in this whole process. And if the ruling does come down negatively or in favor of Mexico and Canada, I would encourage somebody to put the brakes on.
No, I would concur, and I think your comments about the potential retaliatory impacts and using the example of the Mexican truck situation a few years back is clearly one that we could see both Canada and Mexico acting on. Have you had, I know you deal with a number of different issues within your purview, but we just passed the farm bill. Did you get a chance to look at any of the livestock disaster relief elements within the bill?
Now, I know it's very helpful, and I know a lot of producers in the state of California, or I would have to assume that a lot of those producers would take advantage of that financial opportunity extended by Congress, but I don't have, once more, don't have a number for you, Congressman.
I'd like to move on to GIPSa and impacts from your perspective on GIPSa. I wasn't here to ask the last question from Dr. Glaber, but the chairman was. It's been troubling, I know, for you and others, not only in the beefpacking industry, but the poultry packing, poultry processing facility. Would you care to comment?
Yes, Congressman. I think that the two issues that were really highlighted by the proposed rule that came out of Mr. Butler's office were related to alternative marketing agreements. As you mentioned in your introduction, I manage our producer alliance. We call it our partnership for quality. We're currently working with 70 of the most progressive ranching families in the western United States. Majority of those are in California. We offer them incentives in the form of premiums that we pay for using certain genetics, vaccination protocols, delivery points. We provide them with opportunities to...
It's value-added, value-added that ultimately...
Correct.
...it's the consumer.
Correct. But if that rule would have gone into place, we would have had to have shut that program down because I would have had to have justified to every person that I purchased cattle from why we were providing premiums that we were. So that and the other provisions that within that proposed GIPSa rule related to Packer ownership of cattle. As you're aware, Congressman, our feedlot and beef processing facility are, they're integrated. They're functionally integrated. Without one, the other cannot operate. And for a rule to be written which says that a Packer cannot own livestock would basically destroy our business model.
Well, and not only yours, but other throughout the country.
Correct.
Which is one of the reasons that I've had some, and I would go further to say that, you know, the Congress is, in three successive budget appropriations, opined on its view on this, and to still have the United States Department of Agriculture pursuing rulemaking in spite of that fact, I think is really a violation of separation of powers. But I mean, I'm not a constitutional lawyer. My time's expired, but I'd like to ask Mr. Roganek if we have a second round about his view on the GIPSa impact as well.
Yes, thank you. Two issues. One, USDA is not following the instructions, directions of Congress. I think that's a broader issue that we all need to be aware of. And then, secondly, the overreaching into business relationships. We've had family farmers under contract growing for 40 or more years, and that relationship is very stable, and it's being dealt, it has been dealt with under the previous rules. So it's a case of regulating a problem that doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, Yields, Chair recognizes the gentleman from Pennsylvania, Mr. Thompson, for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, I want to pick up where the Ranking Member, you know, left off and check in with Mr. Miller and see, you know, specifically, I think the Ranking Member kind of laid out, the intent of Congress has been repetitive and clear, yet despite that, you know, this issue persists. Mr. Miller, could you take a moment to explain why much of the livestock sector still believes this final rule is bad for your business and bad for producers?
Congressman, I'm sorry, are you referring to GIPSa or IMCOOL?
GIPSa, yes.
GIPSa, okay. Yeah. The GIPSa rule, you know, really leads to increased litigation costs, but the biggest thing I think it does is decreases innovation that's out there. I mean, ultimately, today's beef and pork business, you know, we've spent 25 to 30 years trying to get out of this commodity bucket and trying to tailor different products to different programs to different consumers. And ultimately, every pound of beef or every pound of pork isn't necessarily equivalent to every pound of beef and every pound of pork, if that makes sense. So ultimately, the offerings are becoming larger and larger, and the GIPSa rule as originally proposed would greatly increase litigation costs without adding any additional benefit to the farmers, ultimately to our customers and consumers either.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I hear a lot from Mike Cattlemen, most recently, about potential impact with opening up trade from Brazil with beef and the potential, which is a country has dealt with, had some issues in certain areas, and it was with foot and mouth, and what that potentially would do perhaps to negatively impact our beef industry. So I was just curious to get your perspectives. Are there safeguards that would make fresh and frozen beef imports from Brazil viable and safe for U.S. cattle sector? And is the problem with this rulemaking primarily one a flawed process or simply insufficient scientific data to offer a judgment in the matter?
Congressman, to the first part of your question, I'm not a trained microbiologist, so I don't know if I could effectively and correctly answer the question relative, is there something we could do to negate it, to minimize any potential impact, the product coming in on fresh product? I would have to get back to you and visit with some of the scientists I'm familiar with. Regarding the second portion of your question, I think our biggest concern as an industry is one of making certain that due diligence has in fact occurred. I think we would take the position that we've got to be overly cautious, using a term that USDA likes to use quite often. In the abundance of caution, we might suggest that we either slow down this process or just make certain that what we're proposing to do, i.e. allowing fresh product from Brazil to come into the country, that we have in fact dotted I's and crossed T's.
Thank you. Mr. Roganek, in your testimony, you outlined a number of challenges to our producers facing the global market. And in two regions, specifically with the Trans-Pacific Partnership and the Transatlantic Trade and Investment Partnership, we have opportunities to address several of these issues. Do you believe that the current path of these negotiations will yield satisfactory outcomes? And on which key issues do you believe the U.S. should be pressing harder?
You've asked an excellent question. In the case of Trans-Pacific Partnership, Canada has a supply management program for poultry and dairy. Our position is that Canada can maintain that supply management system if they prefer. We just ask that the border be opened to free and fair trade for U.S. poultry, and we hope that negotiation does that. In the case of the agreement being discussed with the European Union, we have been shut out of that market since 1997 because we, originally because the issue was we use chlorinated water in our processing. We have indicated that we would be glad to use something other than chlorinated water, which we do in the case of Russia. That has not been sufficient for the EU to revisit that issue. We think that's a $600 million market. They import over $2 billion of poultry a year. We think we could get at least one-third of that market. And to be shut out of the European market because of really a non-tariff trade barrier is really unfortunate, and if the negotiations do not resolve that, I'm not sure when the next good opportunity will be to address that. So we're hopeful. I'd like to predict that we will be successful, but as they say, nothing is agreed to until everything's agreed to. So we're staying in close contact with our negotiators.
Okay. Thank you, sir, and thank you to all the panel. Chairman?
Gentlemen, Yields, Chair recognizes the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Scott, for five minutes.
Yes, I would like to sort of continue the line of questioning on trade and zero in on the Trans-Pacific Partnership, and especially as it affects market access and particularly with Japan. And very much concerned about what impact this would have, particularly on beef and pork. I guess most of you, but especially there. So Mr. Michael Smith and Mr. Steve Meyer, would you share with the committee exactly what the impact would be on your industry if an agreement is made and Japan is exempted and does not remove their tariff and non-tariff trade barriers in this agreement?
Yeah, I'll ask my counterpart here to comment as well, but I will tell you, my personal opinion is if Japan says that they will not negotiate in terms of relaxing the tariffs that are currently being applied to beef, that we would encourage you not to vote for TPP.
What would happen if we did? I'm not saying we will, but it would help us not to do that if you would tell us the grave impact it would have on your industry if that agreement was approved and giving without Japan committing to access. What impact would it have on the other 12 or 11 nations? Would it be a bad precedent? What would be the cost to you and your industry? What would be the impact to the people of America in the cost? Can you give us something that we can hold our hat on to go to bat for you that would tell us how bad an impact this would be on American beef and pork especially?
Mr. Miller, because he included pork in the question, Mr. Congressman, I'd ask my counterpart here to, I can come back and address it from my company as well.
Okay.
Congressman, from a Tyson perspective, you know, ultimately, we do share the goal of getting to zero on tariffs and appreciate the support of the administration and Congress on the issue. However, we do need to achieve significant market access for our products as part of the TPP negotiations, but we also need to ensure that we stay on a level playing field with our global competitors. Having some access, meaning from a Japanese perspective, is the largest pork revenue destination for U.S. exports in the world. Mexico is number one from a volume perspective, but Japan is number one from a total dollar standpoint. So accessibility is definitely key from a pork perspective and also from a beef perspective from Tyson's point of view.
All right.
And Congressman, I don't want to sound like a parrot, but I would echo a lot of those comments. The Japanese market is very important to the U.S. beef industry. Harris Ranch was fortunate to be one of the first companies, or the first company, to get back in country once they allowed us with their 20-month rule. There's tremendous upside potential to be able to increase the volume of product that would be moved into Japan, and especially if those tariffs were removed.
Okay, very good. And I certainly agree with you and certainly will help you, and because I believe it will have a devastating impact, it will set a bad precedent, and I hope that we in Congress will not approve that trade agreement unless Japan acquiesces and gives us that market access. But let me go to one other point I raised earlier about the renewable fuels, because I think Congressman King and I, working together, will have a solution for this. If you were here earlier, I told him in the air, so I said, "If I were a farmer in Iowa, indeed, I would be planting corn, 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 because it's going." But that renewable fuel standard is having a devastating impact on you and on your feed costs. My issue here is that why not put a great more emphasis on other areas of carbohydrates? I mean, why, corn is there, you're not going to change that. I think the die is set, the economics is set there, but as I said earlier, there's just so much corn we can do, and now 40% of all the corn we produce is used for ethanol. And if you get the renewable standard going with more and more automotives, more and more, then you just get more. And I think that we should be putting, there are other ways to make the ethanol, there's switchgrass to make it. switchgrass to make it. There are ways in which, now, of course, with sugarcane. Perhaps a part of your plea may be in adjusting this, because I think the issue with you is bringing down the impact of feed costs that the ethanol is putting the downward pressure on. And so I think that there's other areas. I know in the South, at the University of Georgia, for instance, great progress is being made in other areas of carbohydrates. And perhaps we might do well to take a look at Brazil and maybe suggest to Congress that we lift those tariffs on the import of sugarcane, at least to a way that the sugar industry here can accept, and begin to look to other means of being able to add to the supply of ethanol, because ethanol is in the future. It's going to be more. Renewable fuels is where we're going. The earth is going to run out of petroleum and fossil fuels. So I just wanted to make that comment and look at it more holistically. There's wood chips that can make ethanol, pine straw now. All we need to do is put our efforts to that. And I would encourage you, we'll work with you on the renewable fuels, but I would also encourage you to work with helping us in Congress to lift the downward pressure off of all of this ethanol just being made on corn and shift to other areas. Yes.
Does you want to respond, Mr. Yields?
Do you want a quick response?
Yes, sir, please.
I live near Ames, Iowa. The town just to the east is Nevada, Iowa, and right now there's a major construction project to build a siloic ethanol plant. It's being financed entirely by DuPont. My son, who farms, has been working with DuPont for the last three years in working on the proper collection of corn stover. This is going to be, that's what's going to feed this plant. So there is activity other than corn-based ethanol going forward. Logistics of the amount of corn stover versus a grain of corn is phenomenal, but at least we do have private industry putting money into this, and you're right, there are other sources.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time.
Mr. Scott.
Could I make a comment on the RFS as well? I think what tends to get lost in this conversation is the RFS, when it was originally conceived, contemplated using corn for the first half of the development of the fuel, renewable fuel industry. And really, the next big chunk was going to come from these advanced biofuels, like stover, like wood chips, like manure, all those kinds of things. We have largely gotten the first half done. Corn got us there. And what we learned in this industry by producing renewable fuel from corn is enormously important to developing that next step. If we back up from this thing now, we will destroy the opportunity to do the next step, and that will be a terrible shame.
Well stated. I agree with you 100%.
Mr. Chairman, may I also make a comment about the RFS?
Sure.
I'd like to briefly illustrate what's done to our company individually. I was at a farmer cooperative meeting in Minneapolis, and a gentleman who was an ethanol plant developer stood up, and he was asked the question if there, what the impact was on the livestock industry because of the ethanol. And he made the comment, there was no impact on the livestock industry. That is absolutely not true. Our costs, I reported in my testimony that our feed costs had gone up 125% from '06 to 2013. Individually, our company, we are on the lower end of that at 80%. And you can argue, well, why is that? Your costs gone up, or do you use your feed inefficiently? Did you buy it wrong? You can argue all of those things. We have reduced the, or improved the efficiency of our feed by millions of dollars since then, and we average better than our industry peers in the use and the feed conversion of our turkeys. And the other side of that is, we're compared to 339 feed mills in the United States. We buy, we're ranked number 37. So I would argue that we buy and use the corn we have to purchase as competitively as anyone, but our costs have gone up 80%. And we don't have the opportunity in the turkey business. It's a zero-sum game. There are other things we can feed our turkeys, like wheat, but there's only so many acres. And so I would urge you strongly, a complete repeal is the only, if the market's established for ethanol, just let it work. Let the free market work, and if they want to buy corn to put in ethanol, then they should have to pay and not be mandated that that portion of the market go to corn. Just those that want and need corn, we become more efficient through competitiveness, but not a mandate saying, "You get this much."
Thank you. Ranking Member Costa, any closing remarks?
No, I thought it was good hearing it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I want to thank the witnesses. Great insight. We feel like this will help us address those issues that you've laid out in front of us, and we'll keep your comments and-- Do we keep the record open? Do we keep this open for a period of five days? For additional remarks, extension of your remarks. So thank each one of you for being here, and with that, we adjourn.